All right. I'd like to call this meeting of the, what's the, City Council Training to Order, and this is for the Urbana's newly elected city council members. It's Saturday, April 24th, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? I wonder if she will.
I'll go.
Okay. Typically, we're all on Zoom, so this is the one part we didn't practice. We were just informed that since this council hasn't been seated yet, we don't do a roll call. Is that correct?
Well, you can take a roll of who's in attendance. And since you're not going to be taking the action on anything, a quorum is not required.
Okay. Well, I'll just introduce and welcome our incoming council members, and we'll go from there. So, welcome to the new council members and returning council members. We're going to have a council composed of Mary Alice Wu, Christopher Evans, Sharice Hirssey, Jaya Colacetti, Chandra Bishop, Grace Wilkin, and James Quisenberry. And they will all be officially sworn on on May 3rd. So this training is part of an ongoing series of trainings we've been holding to introduce new council members to some of the basics of city government and to remind returning elected officials of the many details as well. So we thank the Illinois Municipal League for being here this morning to provide information on several very important aspects of city government. And I have to say, just speaking as a former council member and now mayor, I've relied on the IML daily for information and resources, and I think you'll find the same. You'll get a lot of resources today, but there are so many things to learn as you consider different issues. And IML provides a lot of technical information on specific topics, anywhere from TIF to enterprise zones to LG, or local government distributive funds. And then they keep us up to date on legislation that's making its way through the General Assembly. And when you get a really complicated issue, like the cannabis, recreational cannabis legislation that passed a couple of years ago, it was really useful information for us as elected officials to have that background. So we're just delighted to have the IML here today. And a couple of logistical things. Restrooms are in the lobby if you need them. I think you've all been instructed on how to turn your microphones on and off. And just a reminder to turn off, put your cell phones on silence. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brad Cole, who's the IML Executive Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning to all of you, each of you individually. And collectively, it's nice to be here in the city of Urbana. I am Brad Cole, the Executive Director of the Illinois Municipal League, and we're pleased to be able to provide some newly elected officials training and information to you. It's a little different than what we ordinarily do, but we thought this would be helpful because so many new members were elected to this council. And as you're going to be sworn in and beginning your duties, the information that we'll provide to you today will be helpful. So you will hear from several of our staff, each on a different topic. We'll be talking about the basics of municipal government. We'll be talking about the Open Meetings Act and providing a certificate of completion, which is required for your participation with that. We'll be talking about ethics and conflicts of interest. We'll provide a legislative update, and we'll be answering any questions along the way that you have about any of those topics and anything else. At your seat, you've found a stack of publications. And many of the topics that we'll cover in the presentations will be referencing some of those publications. In the folder, the packet, there is other information that's contained that we'll also reference, so some fact sheets, and also the slide deck presentations are in there. So if you want to follow through each one of them as they proceed, you can make notes on that. Lots of information. It can be overwhelming, but for those of you that have served a year or more, you know that you're always going to be learning. The intent today is to give you a good overview of what you will want to know about and what you may have questions about. We are a resource for you. The city of Urbana is a member of the Illinois Municipal League. There are presently 1,298 municipalities in Illinois. You'll hear that number a little bit later with a slight variation. We are a membership organization in just about every community, all but a handful are members of IML. So we appreciate your membership. And what we do is provide for each of you as elected officials and for the appointed officials, whatever we can to help you with your jobs. So that may be education, like today, it may be advocacy, which you'll hear about in the legislative process, and it may be empowering you as local officials to be able to do your jobs better. So we're pleased to be here, and I think it'll be a good morning. In the packet is a green piece of paper that I will be collecting at the end of the day, which is a survey of how we did, that will represent the quiz that you have to take. So it shouldn't be too painful, but if you want to follow, if you want to complete that as you go through, I will be trying to collect that at the end of the day. First up for us is Cassie Good. Cassie is in our Legislative Department, and she's going to talk to you about the basics of municipal government. And then each person thereafter will be introduced, and we'll talk about the subject that they are most familiar with. As I indicated, the presentation is in your packet in hard copy and will be presented on the screen as a part of the PowerPoint. So, thank you, Mayor, and thanks to each of you for being here, and we look forward to the day.
Good morning. My name is Cassie Good. I'm the Legislative Liaison for the Illinois Municipal League. Congratulations to all of you, and thank you for having us this morning. I'll be presenting to you the basics of municipal government. As newly elected officials, you have goals and campaign promises to keep and a list of issues to address. However, this presentation is not intended to advise you about the wisdom or practicality of your goals and aspirations, but rather to familiarize you with your new role as an elected official so that you're better equipped to meet those goals. Situated here. So let's start with the basics. Illinois is made up of nearly 7,000 units of local government, more than any other state in the country. There are 102 counties, 1,298 cities, villages, and incorporated towns, although this number will be changing to 1,296, as Cahokia, Centreville, and Allerton, located in the Metro East area, will be consolidating into one community, which will be known as Cahokia Heights. Other types of units of local government include libraries, school districts, township governments, road districts. Another interesting point I'd like to make is that Urbana also sits as a township, and that is unique, as not too many other communities do this. Units of local government are governed by the United States Constitution, federal legislation, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, state legislation, and local ordinances. The Illinois Municipal Code is the fundamental state statute governing municipalities. This is the primary statute for municipalities looking for guidance, authority, and direction on how to conduct most operations of municipal government. Additionally, your municipality has adopted a municipal code that consists of ordinances specific to your municipality that must be reviewed and followed when making any and all decisions. It's important that you familiarize yourself with Urbana's ordinances and their content. Municipal governments are typically responsible for their infrastructure, regulation of land use, zoning and buildings, traffic, health, environmental cleanliness, businesses, and parking, and services such as police and fire, animal control, parks and recreation, streets, and so on. A critical function of municipal government is the approval of an annual budget to fund these services, which we'll discuss a little bit more in this presentation. A key distinction that guides a municipality's ability to address these responsibilities is its status as either being home rule or a non-home rule government. In Illinois, home rule status refers to the state constitutional authority of local governments to self-govern, provided that the General Assembly does not explicitly limit that power or maintain the exclusive exercise authority in a specific area. The city of Urbana is one of the 218 home rule communities in the state. This number recently changed from 217, as Savoy recently passed a referendum, now making it a home rule community. In Illinois, municipalities with a population of more than 25,000 automatically become a home rule unit, although this could be rejected by referendum. Constituents may also vote for a smaller community to become a home rule unit through the referendum process. Home rule is based on the belief that some problems are inherently local and that the government that is closest to the people is best suited to deal with these issues. Being a home rule community allows for custom-tailored solutions, as they have more flexibility than non-home rule communities, in areas such as creating local regulations or codes, developing impact fees, bonding authority, using design-build contracts, and taxing both residents and non-residents. While home rule governments have the autonomy to address local problems with local solutions, they can also achieve broad goals through cooperation with other governmental units. The competent administration of local government involves working together. Intergovernmental cooperation may be defined as an agreement between two or more governments for achieving common goals, providing a service, or solving a mutual problem. Examples of intergovernmental cooperation could include shared library services, police and fire protection, emergency medical services, and shared government buildings. Intergovernmental cooperation can result in cost savings, efficiency, and sharing of resources and ideas that could benefit all. It is wise to seek out opportunities for cooperation and shared interests with your neighboring and overlapping governments. Now that we've discussed the general purpose and powers of municipal governments, I'd like to go over the roles and responsibilities of municipal officials, such as yourself, whose commitment to public service is critical to a municipality's success. The city of Urbana operates under a mayoral, aldermanic form of government. A city council consists of the mayor, seven aldermen, elected for four-year terms as provided by state law. As city council members, you act as the legislative branch to the city, as the mayor acts as the executive branch. It's important that you understand your roles and responsibilities as a city council member. The city council is instrumental in establishing laws and ordinances for citizen welfare, as well as determining policies that govern municipal services and the approval of mayoral appointments. Per Urbana City Code, as elected officials of the city of Urbana, your terms will begin the first regular or special meeting in the month of May following the election. The mayor is the executive chief of the city. The mayor chairs city council meetings and works with the council to implement goals, plans, standards, and policies, and represents the city on intergovernmental boards and activities. The mayor is responsible for appointing officials, staff, and members of the city, boards and commissions, with the approval of the city council. According to Urbana City Code, there may be appointments made annually and whenever vacancies occur in certain offices by the mayor with the approval of the city council. A few examples are the city administrator, police and fire chief, or the finance director, or such other employees as the mayor of the city council may, from time to time, deem necessary. Additionally, the mayor serves as the local liquor commissioner, although they may appoint someone else to assist them in that role. By state law, municipalities have the power to legislate liquor licenses and fees. The local liquor commissioner may grant, suspend, and revoke licenses, authorize enforcement activity, and receive complaints from citizens. The council, however, generally has control over the total number of licenses and rules governing licensing. By the very nature of the office, the city clerk receives all communications addressed to the municipality or governing body. The city clerk is required to attend all meetings of the city council and keep a full journal of its proceedings. The city clerk is not only responsible for recording management, for record management, but also to meet all legal notices for meetings, to serve as the clerk to the city council, and to assist the county clerk in conducting elections. The city clerk also serves as the lead Freedom of Information Act officer for the city of Urbana, and also the custodian of the municipal seal. One thing to note is that all retained documents must be filed in the office of the clerk. One resource that the city clerk may find useful is the IML-produced Monthly Review Magazine. In addition to a broad scope of articles and features containing information of both general and specific interest to municipalities, the Review Magazine provides monthly municipal officials statutory duties and requirements, along with a complete annual calendar published in December. The role of the city administrator is to aid and assist the mayor in the formulation and development of policies, procedures, and programs, as established by the mayor and the city council, and to supervise and administer the implementation of these policies, programs, and procedures. A city administrator makes recommendations to the mayor for the appointment of all department and division heads that are subject to appointment. The city administrator directs the general operations and business of all departments and divisions of the city. The city administrator also provides for communications with the city among the various departments and divisions, and assists the mayor in the enforcement of all laws and ordinances within the municipality. While the city of Urbana has a city administrator, the city of Champaign has a council-manager form of government, and therefore has a city manager. The difference between these roles are that the city administrator's obligations and duties are determined by the mayor and the city council through ordinances, whereas a city manager's duties are defined in part by statute. Members of the city of Urbana's boards and commissions are generally appointed by the mayor and are confirmed by the city council. All board, commission, and committee meetings are open to the public. According to Urbana City Code, the city council shall elect one of its members as mayor pro tem, who, while remaining in office, shall continue to serve as mayor pro tem until another member is elected and assumes the duties. If a temporary absence or disability of the mayor incapacitates the mayor from the performance of his or her duties, but does not create a vacancy in the office, the mayor pro tem shall perform the duties and possess all rights and powers of the mayor according to state law. The city of Urbana's City Code also provides for the order of succession for the mayor pro tem in the event the mayor or the mayor pro tem are temporarily absent or incapacitated. Now that we have discussed the roles of various municipal officials, I'd like to touch on city council meetings. The critical work of municipal government typically begins or occurs at its regularly scheduled meetings. You are now one of the members of the corporate authorities of the city of Urbana. Much of what a municipality does will require direction and authorization by your council. One key to a successful term will be to learn, to be learning, to use meetings to develop effective policy, form your decision-making process, and to ensure theory and debate are translated into actions and results. State law requires that government business be conducted in the sunshine, with its work and proceedings open to the public. The Open Meetings Act defines the gatherings that are subject to this requirement. Patrick Hayes, IML's general counsel, will cover the Act's provisions and how to comply with its terms in the next presentation. While different municipalities perform many of the same functions, they do so in different ways. Some local governments have developed procedures over years out of tradition. However, one priority for all local governments should be to have efficient and timely meetings. While clear agendas are required by state law, it is good practice to use them to specifically identify your goals and objectives for each meeting. The agenda should be specific and list the topics that will be discussed in a manner sufficiently clear to put the public on notice on matters that will be considered for final action during the meeting. Clarification of the meeting is necessary. The chair in the meeting should call for those modifications or changes in the order of business at the beginning of the meeting. Once the agenda is set at the beginning of the meeting, it should not be altered. A consent agenda is an efficient tool permitted by Illinois law, which assembles all agenda items that do not require special consideration or discussion. They may be voted on in a single up or down vote with one motion. Consent agendas include items such as expenditure of funds, approval of minutes, and passage of non-controversial resolutions and motions to receive or accept documents. Items remain on the consent agenda by unanimous consent. Prior to the vote, the chair should give the opportunity for members to remove an item; otherwise, all items should be voted on as a group. An agenda must be published at least 48 hours prior to the meeting, and final action can only be taken on items listed on that agenda. Public comment, or sometimes referred to as public input, is essential to good governance. According to Urbana City Code, any person seeking to address the members of a commission, committee, or other body of the city at a public meeting will be permitted to speak on any matter listed on the agenda or of public concern. Prior to speaking, each person must be recognized and must state their full name for the record. The City Code limits public participation to no more than five minutes per person and no more than two hours per meeting, unless extended by consent of the majority vote of members present. Per the City Code, if there are more than 20 individuals desiring to speak, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. In the event a group wishes to address members on the same subject matter, the code suggests a spokesperson be chosen to represent the group. If other members of the group wish to address the body, a limit of persons may be applied, and they may be limited to present only information that has not already been presented by the spokesperson. Such limitations should be exercised with care, patience, and without bias on a case-to-case basis and clearly articulated. The chair and council members may, as necessary and appropriate, ask, question or ask for clarification of those presenting comments. Keep in mind that this is a public input period and not a public debate period, and you are not obligated to answer all questions of the speakers. Some communities, like the city of Urbana, use a committee of the whole system. Committee of the whole meetings provide the opportunity for members of the council to participate in discussion without voting upon issues prior to a full meeting where the council will take formal action on items. Newly elected officials often ask whether something needs to be done by motion, resolution, ordinance, or proclamation. Policy decisions are generally made through a deliberative process, so it's important that you know and become familiar with these basic motions. However, please note that not every municipality operates identically, therefore, in this section, we will cover only the basics. Here are a few mechanisms in order to pass your local legislation. An ordinance is used to pass a new law or regulation. Some ordinances are required by state law, and only an ordinance can amend an ordinance. You'll be called upon to review questions about sign ordinances, traffic rules, building codes, and whether to impose a ban on parking on snow days and the alike. In many ways, these local ordinances are the ones that most directly impact the daily lives of your residents. Local ordinances are the starting point for the routine business or regular council meetings, committee structures, regulations, and controlling local issues. Most municipal codes deal with a substantial range of issues, from business licenses, animals, building codes, motor vehicle and traffic regulation, fire and police, and everything else that has been considered and approved by a municipal ordinance. A resolution is issued by the city council and usually authorizes specific one-time action. For example, a resolution would be used to approve a contract or to bid, accept a report, or make an appointment. A proclamation is issued by the mayor and does not have binding effect or function of law, nor do they authorize a specific action, but rather use to state the intent or feelings of a specific issue. Motions are a parliamentary procedure that is used to get an item on the table for discussion, whether that item is an ordinance, a resolution, or an action, such as authorizing the approval of the purchases of new lawn mowers. Members of the city council are responsible for making motions, seconding motions, debating on motions, and voting on motions. Motions must be seconded to be voted on. When making a motion, observe common courtesy, allow the last speaker to finish, and wait for the chair to recognize you. In your packet, you'll find a parliamentary procedure guide that covers a variety of motions and proper procedure. However, keep in mind that each community is different, and there could be a variance in practice. During a voice vote, the chair will ask for aye's and nay's. Any member may vote for an exact count or roll call. During a roll call vote, each member is called by name. Acceptable responses during a roll call vote are aye, nay, abstain, or present. A few things to consider prior to voting. Think about what a law ordinance will look like in implementation. Ask basic questions before regulating. Consider how many residents will be affected. Ask how the proposal will help. Be aware of the costs. Ask if the proposal makes the community more desirable. And when in doubt, we recommend that you utilize your legal guidance and consult with your experts. Some projects have an enormous impact on your community that is of strategic importance, so it's crucial to have these projects carefully reviewed. As you enter your career as a government official, never forget that local government is subject to what is known as the sunshine laws. So we will briefly cover the Freedom of Information Act, commonly known as FOIA, and the Local Records Act. FOIA is designated to ensure that the public is given access to documents used by local governments in their function and decision-making. All public records of these local governments are subject to FOIA, regardless of their form, electronic, or paper, and regardless of whether they produce the documentation or if it came into their control in some other manner. This means that not only are your agendas, records, letters, and completed research reports subject to FOIA, but so are your emails, instant messages, along with maps, photographs, and other documented materials. It's not generally relevant if you send a message from your home or place of business. If it is in the conduct of government business, it is subject to FOIA. Your public body must make these available to any party requesting records for inspection. Only a number of documents are exempt from FOIA, including, but not limited to, exceptions for privacy, such as preserving a social security number, or some police records, such as a juvenile record. Security, drafts, trade secrets, and competitive information, attorney advice, and certain real estate and labor negotiations are also exceptions. Generally, municipal staff will handle FOIA responses. An exhaustive discussion of FOIA is beyond the scope of this presentation. So this is a reminder that not only a few exceptions, that with only a few exceptions, most of what you say, do, and write in your capacity as a public official will be subject to public review. Another law, the Local Records Act, creates certain rules regarding which documents must be retained. It is unlawful to destroy records without authority. Your municipality should have a policy in place to ensure that the correct documents are retained, and it would be worth your while to review it. Local governments need revenue to pay for programs and services. The principal sources of revenue for municipalities are property taxes, including special service area and special assessment taxes, sales and use taxes. A municipality's home rule status determines the process for imposing a local sales tax. Home rule municipalities, like Urbana, are able to impose a local sales tax by passing an ordinance levying the new sales tax rate. Personal property replacement taxes, also known as PPRT, are revenues collected by the state of Illinois and paid to local governments. These revenues replace funds lost by local governments after personal property taxes were eliminated in the 1970 Constitution. Motor fuel tax, commonly known as MFT, is the tax Motor fuel tax, commonly known as MFT, is the tax on the privilege of operating motor vehicles upon public highways and operating recreational watercraft upon waters of Illinois, a tax is based on the consumption or purchase of motor fuel. The funds of which a municipality receive are through the state based on a formula based on population. Municipalities throughout Illinois utilize motor fuel tax revenues to fund critical infrastructure projects in their cities, towns, and villages. Motor fuel tax funds can be used for, including but not limited to, constructing and maintaining roads, traffic control, street lighting, storm sewers, or bike paths. Other revenue sources include state income taxes and the Local Government Administrative Distributive Fund, commonly known as LGDF. LGDF is a designated portion of state income tax revenues. Cities and counties currently receive a percentage of total state income tax revenues through this fund on a per capita basis. In addition to funding everyday core services for Illinois citizens, LGDF distributions play a role in keeping the local tax burden low. Without LGDF, communities across Illinois would need to explore increases to other fees or taxes, including property taxes or cutting important programs. Later in this presentation, you will hear more about LGDF and the governor's proposed budget in the legislative update given by IML's Director of Legislative Affairs, Mitchell Remmer. Other municipal sources of revenue are utility and cable television fees. Municipalities also have other less significant revenue streams such as fines, license fees, grants, and impact fees. In your packets, there are fact sheets enclosed explaining many of these revenue sources. Additionally, in the IML's Review Magazine, municipal revenue estimates are published quarterly. A critical function of municipal government is the approval of the annual budget to fund these services, which we will discuss next. Annually, the city council passes a budget ordinance setting forth anticipated and estimated expenditures and levy money. Your annual budget cycle must comply with certain state-required dates and actions. The city of Urbana's fiscal year begins on the first day of July of each year and ends on the thirtieth day of June of each year. The finance director is responsible for, including but not limited to, establishing the use of efficient planning, budgeting, auditing, reporting, accounting, and other fiscal management procedures. The finance director examines all books and records of each department, commission, and board, examines money received by the city and paid out by the city its debts, and compiles the annual budget. The passage of the annual budget ordinance is done by the city council with the approval of the mayor. It must be adopted before the beginning of the fiscal year to which it applies. The city of Urbana's municipal year coincides with its fiscal year. Subsequent to the passage of the annual budget ordinance, an ordinance shall be passed establishing the property taxes to be levied for the fiscal year. Such ordinance shall establish the property taxes as may be required by the approved annual budget ordinance and shall be known and referred to as the tax levy ordinance. At least one public hearing should be held on the proposed annual budget ordinance prior to the final approval of it. The proposed annual budget ordinance should be conveniently available for public inspection at least four days prior to the public hearing of the annual budget ordinance. Notice of the availability for inspection of the proposed annual budget ordinance should be given by publication in a newspaper having a general circulation in the city for at least fourteen days prior to the time of the public hearing of the annual budget ordinance. Another major municipal component is the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is an advisory zoning document, however, it does not have control of the land use of specific parcels. The importance of the comprehensive plan lies with the fact that it is the foundation upon which municipalities build their land use regulations such as zoning and subdivision ordinances. The Illinois Municipal Code gives a plan commission board authority to create, amend, and implement a comprehensive plan as land is developed both in and outside municipal boundaries. By law, a comprehensive plan must be considered by the plan commission of a municipality and then reviewed by the corporate authorities for consideration. Generally, the elements of the plan address future land uses such as agricultural, business, industrial, and residential uses such as estates, single-family, housing, and high-density areas. Elements of the plan include depiction of future transportation networks, including roads and train stations, and even the parking for the train station. The comprehensive plan is the foundation of a community's land use regulations. Now is an excellent time to start thinking of your community's comprehensive plan as municipalities are required to periodically update these. As an elected official, you now represent the city of Urbana and not just yourself. You must remain mindful that in your day-to-day interactions and your decisions. You must also keep in mind that your primary responsibility is to represent the constituents' best interest. Many communities fail to anticipate change. It is often the case that a municipality is reacting to the immediate needs and circumstances but fails to be proactive in planning its own destiny. There is no substitute to carefully planning your community's future. Meet with local businesses to determine their needs, their concerns, and what they wish the city of Urbana would do for them. Much of politics is relationships, so be fair and work as a team. Whether you share the same outlook on issues or policies, you may be, you will be spending the next several years working together, whether you share, respect differing opinions. Reasonable people can disagree without being disagreeable. Serving as an elected official is complex, demanding, and challenging, all while being extremely rewarding, so enjoy it. And now I'd like to provide you with a few resources you may find valuable as you navigate your new role as newly-elected official. The Illinois Municipal Lead provides numerous resources for the benefit of our member municipalities and their officials. A few examples of what we provide, such as our fact sheets, are enclosed in your packets. Additionally, IML produces a monthly review magazine, as previously stated. The magazine provides monthly municipal official statutory duties and requirements, along with a complete annual calendar that is published in December. IML has an extensive library of informative publications, as you can see in front of you. You've received several of those today, to include the IML Handbook for Newly-Elected Officials. This publication goes further into the basics we covered today, along with some of the more complex issues you may face as a newly-elected official. IML offers a range of educational training services to our members throughout the year. IML produces several e-newsletters to include a weekly State House briefing, a monthly legal bulletin, and a monthly federal focus. If you're not currently signed up for these, there's a contact information form in your packet that provides you with the option to sign up, or you can do so on iml.org/subscribe. The IML Annual Conference is the municipal event of the year where more than 2,000 registrants are offered unparalleled access to education and professional development, as well as an opportunity to network with fellow elected officials. This year's annual conference will be September 23rd to September 25th. The IML website, iml.org, has an abundance of information, which includes links to many sites that you may find useful in your new role. As previously stated, the intent here is not to give you an exhaustive legal track exploring every municipal issue in detail, but to give you some insight on the process and duties of your new responsibility of being an elected official. I hope you found this presentation helpful and informative. Thank you all for your time and good luck in your new endeavors, and I will take whatever questions you may have. James?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. One of the, my first question is if there's guidance either from the state or from this, the practices of this body, so I'm looking over this way, for abstentions. Is there a requirement that if an official abstains, that they explain the reason for their abstention?
Okay. Thank you for that question, but I'll refer to Brad on that.
Please use the microphone.
Yeah.
I think I'll bring another chair over here for later, but I was just going to note that if you thought that was exciting, wait till we get to the Open Meetings Act part. So, a lot of this is just information, and we want to encourage questions, and so I appreciate that. Abstentions should, are up to the individual. So, if you have a conflict that you believe is present, it either is a real or perceived conflict, then you have the obligation to state that there is or may be such a conflict and that you're going to abstain from the discussion and the vote. Once you have done that, then you cannot be involved in the discussion. That means at all. So you can't make a motion or second the motion, and you can't comment on anything. And then when the vote is made, you would just abstain. So it is best to do that at the front of the process, but if you haven't done that at the front of the process, as long as you have not participated in the discussion, you can do it at the end before you vote, you know, basically explaining why you're abstaining before you vote. But it is best to do that upfront. And it's up to you if you believe you have a conflict, or if your legal counsel or your private attorney has told you you have, then that's your point to make.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of, but it sounds like a council person could abstain because they don't want to render an opinion at the time the vote is being called? They don't have to explain that?
If you don't have a conflict, it's really, an abstention is a possible vote, but you could also just vote present. Each council has a different set of rules. They may or may not address it here. I don't know if you have anything that addresses what the proper votes are, but it's either an aye or a nay. If you don't wish to vote, you can vote present, I assume, or you can abstain, but an abstention really is that if there is a conflict.
Okay.
We can provide details on that.
Okay. And then my second question with regard to destruction of records. Is email by council members about council business or city business or texts considered records that need to be preserved in that, in that, no destruction of records?
And we'll get into a little bit of that next, but I believe that each of you will have a city email address. That will be your official email address, and that's where you should conduct all of your city business. All of that will then be maintained and preserved by the city in accordance with the Local Records Act, and the short answer then is yes. Now, your text messages and things like that, if they're on your private phone, you know, may be recoverable or discoverable later if necessary, but you really should not use your personal means of communication for city business, and the purpose being so that they, if they are ever required to be produced, that they can be produced by the city. But they are public records if you are conducting public business and using those means for that purpose.
So, and just a nuance to that, since many of us will publish our cell phone number as a way to contact us to the public, you know, does that, does that put that into that realm? I know this is the subject of litigation in the past, I just want to clarify it to today's understanding.
It's an excellent point to clarify. So, if you publish your cell phone number, certainly somebody can call you. I would suggest that if you get a text message that enters into something that is a little more detailed than, are you going to the event at the park this weekend, that you should say, I would prefer that we have this exchange through my city email address, and provide that. Now, how convenient is that? Because we're, many of us are easily in the texting communication mode, but you should remember that if you begin using your private phone for those official communications, then you are going to open that up to possible discovery or FOIA. And so you should just, if somebody wants to engage in a general conversation as a citizen, that's okay, but if you're starting to talk about city business, like, well, we're going to be doing this at the council meeting, and how do you think I should vote, and I don't know what, I've talked to other aldermen, then you should refer them to your city email address, or just talk to them.
Great, thank you.
Grace?
I had another one, just to clarify some of the city structure as far as the city clerk in FOIA. Did I hear in some of the meetings that it, or some aspects of FOIA changed to legal department, is that right? But she's still...
Yeah, there were a couple of items, thanks for bringing that up. There were a couple of items that we needed to clarify. The City Code that you found probably online has not been updated to reflect some ordinances and changes that were made. So, one of those is related to public input guidelines. The council passed an ordinance just recently which changed public input time limits to four minutes instead of five in a total of one hour. And then for our FOIA officer, it's true that the city clerk serves as the, FOIA requests come to the city clerk's office and go out from the city clerk's office, but in between, we have a FOIA officer, in fact, he's in the back of the room here, Ross McNeil, our paralegal, who quarterbacks the FOIA requests, and we have a, we have, now we have a smooth flow for FOIA requests.
And so if I may, that is very common, and it is not uncommon also to have separate FOIA officers in individual departments, primarily in public safety. So you may have a FOIA officer in the police department, and then that would run up through your process. With twelve-hundred-and-ninety-eight different communities in Illinois, everybody does it a little bit differently, so this is the high-level overview, and obviously, we didn't have quite the up-to-date version, but that is very common, that is not out of the ordinary, and in fact, is recommended, so I would say you're doing it properly.
Yeah, and I would add, we do have, within each department, Ross will send out the request, and then within each department, folks are responsible for gathering the required emails and documents, send them to Ross, and then he sends them ultimately back to the city clerk's office for sending on to the requestor.
And if I may, just to kind of talk ahead on a related but separate topic, you're going to hear about a legislative update later. You may find from us at some point, we are opposed to Freedom of Information Act legislation. And you may think, well, golly, why are you opposed to that? We're just providing public information to the public. Well, it is a massive unfunded mandate, and so we may oppose an issue because it requires far greater work or effort than really should be necessary. And many communities have multiple people dedicated to FOIA, a full-time staff that that's all they do, and so it is a significant job for each municipality to undertake, and that's why there are often different people in different departments that handle a piece of it, but overall, you have to have one or two somebody to coordinate it. So, that is often something that is addressed in legislation, and so if you ever see that, you might wonder why we would be opposed to it. It's because it's an unfunded mandate.
Any other questions? Grace?
Also, just a general question too. I was wondering if, in our structure, there's a pathway for the public in interpreting our local ordinances, like if someone has a question of how to interpret this ordinance or the zoning, is there a certain part, does that fall under the city clerk, or is there a bridge there?
In terms of a question about a specific, it depends on the item. Typically, you would want to send your questions, you could send them either to me or the city administrator, and then she could funnel them to the appropriate person. If it's a zoning question, it'll go to our community development folks. If it's a legal question, it'll go to legal, you know, et cetera. But we try to funnel those through Carol.
And that is the best practice also. So you will get questions, well, what does this ordinance mean, or this may be in advance of a meeting or after passage of something. And the best thing to do is, as suggested by the mayor, to direct those to the administrator, so the administrator can get the right answer and can get back to you with the information. It's generally not recommended that you would reach out to staff to try to gather information, because there may be more in a different department than you would think, and so if the mayor has indicated the administrator is the point of contact for that, that usually is best.
Yeah, because we don't want, we just can't swamp staff with questions from seven, eight, nine different people, so it's always good to funnel, we have to funnel it through Carol, and then we'll get it to you. And it's always better to have, if you have questions ahead of time, ask them ahead of time. You know, we love questions. You know, we love questions.
Ms. Colicetti, did you have a question? Oh, I thought you had your hand up. Okay, so that's the quick overview. What's, so next, like I said, this one's a real barn burner. I'm sorry.
It looks like there's a five-minute break on the schedule. Could we go ahead and take that?
If you want to take that now, we were going to take it after this next one, but we could certainly take it now. So we'll take it now.
Could we, could we take it now? Thanks.
Go for it.
So when we come back in a few minutes, we'll start with the Open Meetings Act. Thank you.
Okay, I think we'll get started again. And welcome to Patrick Hayes.
your new role. So please feel welcome to look at that after our session today. We'll start with some background on the Open Meetings Act and identify the public access counselor and their role in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. And then we'll speak a little bit about what brings you, at least to this part of the session today, the training requirements for the Open Meetings Act and what those are and how you comply. In the first section of the Open Meetings Act, the legislature has set forth the policy that supports the act. I just want to emphasize a few points and it's important to keep these in mind, that public bodies exist to aid in the conduct of the public's business. And the people have a right to be informed as to the conduct of their business. And also that the actions and deliberations of public bodies are to be taken openly. Finally, the public shall have advanced notice and the right to attend all public meetings. A good understanding of this public policy will help you understand why the act demands so much of local officials. There's a lot of ambition here and a lot to do. So first, we're going to talk about who the public access counselor is. The Illinois Attorney General's public access counselor is a statutorily created position within the Illinois Attorney's General's Office. They are charged with ensuring and enforcing compliance with the Open Meetings Act through advice, training, education, mediation, and issuing binding opinions. They have an updated index of public access counselor opinions available on the Illinois Attorney General website, and that's where the issues are dealt with and published. And this is a pretty dynamic process. You'll see this change over time. And I heard Mayor Marlin talking about the changes to your public input rules, which we'll talk about a little bit. So all of these enforcement issues, when they get published, they have people considering how they might change their process. And your changes in your process reflect that interactive activity between the public access counselor and public bodies. I want to speak just a little bit about the training requirements that bring you here today. Because the Open Meetings Act requires that training and every elected municipal official and many appointed officials in the state of Illinois have to comply with this training. You must comply with that within 90 days of taking office, so you'll be well within that limit, taking care of this today. And that applies to the appointed individuals that municipalities appoint to be Open Meeting Act officers. And those individuals have to take that initial training just like you, but then they have to comply with annual training as well, as long as they're designated the Open Meeting Act officer. Once you've done this training, you don't have to repeat it. And you do not have an annual training requirement as an elected official. IML will issue your certificate after today's, I'm sorry, I'm off a click here. There we go. IML will issue you a certificate after today's session by email. You'll need to file that with your clerk and you may want to keep a copy of that for your records as well. Municipalities are required to designate those employees and they have to keep those certificates There are a number of definitions in the act and the first one we'll dig into is public body. All of the legislative, executive, administrative, or advisory bodies of cities, villages, and towns are public bodies and subject to the act. This includes subsidiary bodies such as your committees and subcommittees. We'll look at a few of those examples. I know that here in Urbana, there's a committee of the whole. That is a public body subject to the act. Your zoning board of appeals is a public body subject to the act. If your municipality is appointing members to a board or committee pursuant to a local ordinance, that is very likely a subsidiary body and subject to the Open Meetings Act. So that covers a lot of different entities. I heard earlier your IT individual talking about all the different committees and boards that meet, 14 of them or something like that. So they're all public bodies and subject to the act. The Open Meetings Act applies to meetings and there's a complex definition of what a meeting is. And we'll take that in different parts. A meeting is any gathering of a majority of the quorum discussing public business. Those meetings may be in person or electronic. People may gather remotely through telephones, audio or video conferencing, the internet, or any other means of contemporaneous, interactive communication. A portion of the definition of meeting is a gathering and gatherings are what we're doing right here today. A meeting of the public body is a gathering. The committee meetings that we just described earlier, the committee of the whole, those are gatherings under the act. Educational and informational meetings are gatherings. And social events may become a gathering under the Open Meetings Act if a majority of the quorum of the body is present and starts discussing public business in a deliberative way. We don't recommend those types of accidental meetings because it creates some complexities with regard to compliance with the act. So if you're in a social meeting, you can be there and enjoy the company of your colleagues, but avoid discussing public business if you can. A hypothetical may be helpful here. There was unseasonal heavy rain and thunderstorms that Dale used Happy Town. The Happy Town president sent text messages to all eight board members containing a warning about heavy rains, high water, flooding, and other problems throughout the town and attached pictures. The board does not provide cell phones for its members, so the president used her personal cellphone and sent individual text messages to each member's personal cellphone. Five of the board members responded to her individually by text message within the next 15 minutes. Assume that the board president is not a member of any subcommittees of the board. Does this exchange of text messages violate the Open Meetings Act? This is a barn burner part of the presentation that requires some interaction from you. We're going to give you three options on the hypothetical. Don't look ahead to the reveal slide. The first answer is yes, because a majority of the quorum of the board gathered through text messages and exchanged information about the weather commission, the conditions. No, because the exchange of text messages was not contemporaneous and did not meet all of the requirements of meeting under the Open Meetings Act. Or no, because the communication were on private cell phones of the board members. Any of you want to guess what the correct answer is? I know Mayor Marlin's going to help you out with this one.
Go ahead, Grace.
Oh, I didn't see.
I'd guess the second option because it wasn't that immediate time exchange and talking about the weather, not city business.
So it wasn't contemporaneous because they were individual text messages. You may wonder throughout your tenure here why you don't get, why you don't get group messages. And that's one way that perhaps the administrator might control the flow of information and avoid reply to all that might violate the Open Meetings Act. So in this, with individual texts back and forth, you avoid a violation of the act. That type of communication is fine, but if it's contemporaneous where you've got a group message, that could violate the act. So be careful with that. Reply to all is not your friend.
How about a sequential text message? That happens.
Thank you for the question. We do have some time for questions at the end, of course, but when your communications go back to where we used to write letters and you write a letter to somebody, you can get a letter back, that doesn't violate the Open Meetings Act. But with the electronic immediate exchanges, it sort of crowds into being a violation. So if it's one-on-one, back and forth, you're not going to violate the act. But in particular, when there's a group replying or being copied, you can violate the Open Meetings Act. This is where reply to all is really an issue for the Open Meeting Act compliance. And you might see people replying sequentially, a copy to one alderman and then a different copy to another one to do, to get some information exchanged in a timely way, but not violate the Open Meetings Act by collaborating in a group. We are still working through our definition of meeting. And the next topic that we'll talk about is majority of a quorum. And that gets into quite a discussion. There we go. I keep managing to fat finger my way through multiple slides, so I apologize, but I have tracked back once again. So a majority of the quorum is a term of art in the Open Meetings Act that's important to understand and we'll take it in parts. First, a quorum. A quorum is a majority of the members of the public body. For Urbana, that means a quorum of your eight-member city council is five. And that includes the mayor and four aldermen or any five aldermen. A quorum is generally required to be present to start the meeting or to take action. So that number five is your quorum. From that, you can develop what the majority of the quorum is. That's more than half in whole numbers rather than fractions of that quorum. Three members of your city council is a majority of the quorum. They have, because of some smaller committees, created a special rule of five that recognizes that in a group of five, the quorum is three. But under that special rule, they've altered reality and the majority of a quorum under the Open Meetings Act of a group of five or a committee of five is three. Because that gets away from the majority of the quorum being two and any conversation between two officials being a violation of the act. You may wonder about size of committees. We try to recommend if you can, don't have committees smaller than five to take advantage of this rule so that two aldermen or the mayor and an alderman, if they are both on a committee, can have a conversation and not worry about violating the Open Meetings Act. The real issue here is what's a majority of a quorum? You need to keep that in mind, that's three. That can be any three aldermen or the mayor and any two aldermen. That's a majority of the quorum of your city council and that's what you have to be sensitive to in avoiding violations of the Open Meetings Act. Back to the definition of meeting to talk about discussing public business. Here's a lengthy definition of public business and it's pretty broad. If it's got any relation to the city, it's public business. There is room for you to meet with one another and talk, especially just one-on-one. But when you, there's more than two of you present, you start to have to think about not violating the act by not discussing public business. And keep that in mind as you're interacting with your fellow aldermen and with the mayor and other aldermen. Having completed that definition, we're going to talk about attendance by other means. The Open Meetings Act allows for remote electronic attendance by members of the public body for a meeting. Urbana has adopted a rule that allows for electronic attendance of elected members in limited circumstances, and that's in Section 2-31 of the Urbana Municipal Code. A quorum must still be present at the site of the meeting under this rule, but other members may attend electronically if their absence is due to a personal illness or disability, employment purposes or businesses of the city of Urbana, or family or other emergencies. The council may deny a member's electronic attendance by a two-thirds vote if the request does not meet one of the above criteria. So the questions that arise here, you may want to direct to your staff, the administrator, as we mentioned before, or your legal counsel here. But the board has the ability to rule on whether your absence meets the definition. Family vacations and track meets and football games, other club meetings, those are the types of things that may be important to you, but they probably don't allow you to attend a meeting remotely. And I'd rely on your local staff to determine and flesh out that definition. Another means of conducting business remotely is through the use of the recently enacted changes to the Open Meetings Act regarding disaster declarations. Meetings during a disaster or state of emergency may also be held remotely. There must be a disaster declared by the governor or the Illinois Department of Public Health Director, and that disaster must impact the municipality. The mayor has a role in determining that the meeting in person is not prudent and all attendees must be able to hear all of the discussion and testimony. The public and one staff member or an elected official must be present unless the mayor makes a separate determination that that is not feasible due to the disaster. All of the votes must be by a roll call and everything has to be recorded. The Illinois Municipal League has provided in your materials a fact sheet on this to help municipalities understand their roles. I would point out that Urbana's meeting notice, we used a copy of that, sorry about that. We used a copy of that here in the presentation to show an example of a compliant notice. It provides the notice and the means of attendance. And so it's excellent work by your staff, Mayor, to stay compliant with the law. The general rules about meeting locations and accommodations are important to keep in mind as well. The general rule requires that all meetings must be held in a place that is convenient and open to the public unless the disaster provisions apply. and open to the public unless the disaster provisions apply. Those thoughts should drive your decisions about where and when to hold meetings. So let's consider another hypothetical. At a November meeting, the board planned to address the item suspension or dismissal of the Public Works Director and expected a large crowd. A huge number of citizens showed up at the meeting, and the board's usual meeting room was at capacity. Once that capacity was reached, no additional members of the public were allowed to entrance, nor were there any measures taken to accommodate the crowd. The board considered moving to a larger alternative space in the building that was available. However, the board decided to continue the meeting in the original location because they wanted to get past the vote. Did the board violate the Open Meetings Act? Again, three options. No, because switching rooms after the notice had been posted would violate the Open Meetings Act. Or likely yes, because the board did not make its meeting reasonably accessible to the public. Three, no, because some of the public was able to attend the meeting. Any offer of which of those three selections might be correct? Mr. Quisenberry, number?
I'd say number two.
Once again, correct. It's important to keep in mind that access is important for the public, convenient and open to the public should be your dominant thoughts. You'll avoid more, more challenges to the locations of your meeting if they accomplish those tasks. There is just a jurisdiction in Metro East that had a court action about a meeting location that they shifted to accommodate a crowd, and they made rules where the public could participate, albeit in a hybrid fashion. And they were able to hold their meeting, and there was no action. The court upheld the city's plan in that meeting. So you can change the location of the meeting, as suggested here. You give notice to the public, and that works. So make sure that if there's a large crowd coming, you have some way to let the public participate, whether it's in the room, or remotely by hybrid, or in a larger facility. All public bodies must adopt an annual meeting schedule and post and distribute that to the media as required in the Open Meetings Act. And each agenda must be posted at least 48 hours in advance of meetings, unless there is an emergency meeting, in which case the notice must be posted as soon as practical. The Open Meetings Act provides the notice of meetings and agendas has to be posted for public review continuously for that at 48-hour period prior to the meeting, at the principal office of the body, or if there isn't a principal office wherever the meeting's being held. Website posting is required for 48 hours prior to the meeting if your full-time staff maintains the municipal website. And I think that applies here in Urbana. And that website posting satisfies the continuous posting requirement. Many municipalities do both, and they want to make sure the public knows what's going on. You can do the physical posting and comply, or you can, if you have a sufficient staff, you have to do the website posting. There's been litigation in a number of public access counselor opinions about what is sufficient information for an item to be on the agenda. And you may discuss any item at a regular meeting, but you may only discuss items on the agenda at any special meeting. For any final action, the agenda must include the general subject matter and main elements of the item up for consideration. We've put a couple of examples together, and the first one is independent contractor agreement. And that would fail to identify the general nature of what is being discussed and voted on about the agreement, or what the independent contractor is doing. I suppose if you added what the contract was about, such as for annual parking lot striping, to that entry, it would be sufficient. So you have to give the public notice. The next example of an acceptable item, which would be approve the contract for the city manager, that even though it's brief, that would be sufficient to give the public knowledge of what's going on. It's not required to have a lot of detail about what the agreement is, other than identifying sufficiently the, the general nature of the agreement. Once again, we used Urbana's, we've got Urbana's recent agenda, I think this was for your April 12th meeting, if I'm not mistaken. And this shows an excellent example of the type of material and the entries that are required to do regular business. And, once again, Mayor, your staff is certainly up to snuff and knows what it's doing with agenda posting, so thank you. We've got an additional hypothetical about these topics. The Green Village Board caused, called a special meeting to discuss whether to purchase a parcel of land abutting the village's wildlife conservation area that had just went up for sale. The village clerk called the board members on a Tuesday to let them know the meeting would be held at 4:00 PM the next afternoon on Wednesday. The agenda, which the clerk posted 24 hours before the meeting, consisted of only one item, discussion of the purchase of real property at 1,000 Wildlife Road. Has the public received proper notice of the special meeting? Yes, because the property just went up for sale? Yes, because the meeting agenda only included property, a property purchase item for discussion? So no notice to the public was required? Or three, no, the meeting notice and agenda should have been posted at least 48 hours in advance in accordance with OMA's requirements? Do I have a participant? Number, Alderman Wu says it's number three. Thank you. And you're right. I would point out, in this example, the posting likely meets the agenda requirement for final action. And if the discussion is only about the property purchase, the council remained within the restrictions that discussions in a special meeting are limited to items on the agenda. However, without additional facts justifying an emergency, the posting does not meet the 48-hour requirement, so it would violate the act. We are often asked, can anyone video-record our meetings? And the public meetings may be recorded so long as the meeting is not disrupted. You may note that rules regarding recording meetings may be adopted, they have to be written and reasonable, and published to the public, and you can, as long as they're compliant with the act, establish rules for recording of your meetings. But you have to allow it. The Open Meetings Act also provides that record creeping, record-keeping by the board must meet a number of conditions. You have to have written minutes of all your meetings, and those have to include the time, date, and place of the meeting. Summary, the discussion of all matters proposed, deliberated, or decided. The names of all members of the public body that are present and absent, and a record of any votes taken in open session. Another question we often get, do we have to record all the public input? Your meetings can reflect that there's public input given, perhaps who gives them and what the topic is, but a detailed description of what's presented in public input section is not required under the act. With regard to those minutes, those have to be approved in a timely fashion, within 30 days of the public body's seconds, or within 30 days or at the public body's second subsequent regular meeting, whichever is later. I think your committee of the whole meetings might be held as one of those two meetings, so you need to be careful with that. There was a decision on that a couple of years ago, so. You have to make the meetings available to the public within 10 days of approval. The public bodies with full-time staff that maintains a website, you recall that was a requirement earlier regarding posting the notice and agendas. You also must, if you have that staffing, you must also post the minutes on the website. Public bodies should schedule a review of their closed-session minutes at least every six months in order to maintain compliance with the act. Public comment is required of all public bodies, so you have to entertain public comment at all your meetings. Any person, resident or not, may address the council. Again, the council may adopt rules regarding that, as long as they are written and published, and the rules must be reasonable. You must allow the comment at the meeting, but as Cassie mentioned earlier, you don't have to respond to those comments at the meeting. Once again, I'll mention that we pulled the public comment material from your website. I know it's tough to read at this scale, but I think this is version six. I don't know if that's the most recent one. The mayor was talking about a recent agenda, or a recent change to the public input rules, but this was off your website recently, and it's a good example of the fact that these change over time, and posting them on the website is helpful for the public. Mayor?
There is a more recent version.
Well, we were ahead of time putting this material together, and, but by way of example, that shows how this process changes over time and how your staff will be approaching you with changes on these very important rules, as input from the public and/or your input creates that need to change those. We've got an additional hypothetical. A village board established and recorded rules for public comment in an ordinance entitled limitation of debate. A portion of the board rules provides an individual may speak a maximum of three times per calendar year on the same topic. During the public comment, at the September board meeting, Bob Smith, a local accountant, mentioned the subject of the village's property taxes, having just paid his second installment on his residence. The board interrupted him and said, because he had already commented on property taxes three other times that year, including speaking on the levy ordinance, the annual budget, and the compensation ordinance, that he could not address the board about property taxes again until the next calendar year. Did the board act properly? Yes, because the limitation period is part of the board's established and recorded rules concerning public comment. No, the rule was not narrowly tailored to advance a significant governmental interest and impermissibly restricts the public's right to address the board. Or three, yes, because he can address the board about property tax issues again next year. Do I have a volunteer? I'll, I'll answer this one. The correct answer is no. The rule is not narrowly tailored to advance a significant governmental interest. Limiting comment based on content is going to be very difficult to support. If someone wants to repetitively address something during public comment, you basically need to entertain those. We're going to provide a little information about closed sessions. Public bodies may meet in closed session under the exceptions to the Open Meetings Act. I'll just mention a few of the more common exemptions under 2(c) of the Act. Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees is often used, because it's a number of different topics about employees, and one thing municipalities do is they talk about their employees a lot. Litigation, although there are additional findings required for probable or imminent litigation, if you're fearful of a matter being filed, you need to cautiously listen to your legal counsel and perhaps your administrator guiding you whether it's an appropriate time to meet, and then there's other requirements of making a record of the reason for that once you're in closed session, so that on a review, they can understand why it's imminent or probable. This is another subject of a lot of public access opinion, public access counselor opinions. You can meet in closed session to review closed-session minutes, as I mentioned earlier. You need to do that at least every six months. And self-evaluation practices and procedures when meeting with a representative of a statewide association in which the public body is a member. That's, for you, that's the Illinois Municipal League, and we do offer self-evaluation services. You've got a flyer for it in your materials today, and we, our executive director does meet with municipalities with some regularity, and they go through self-evaluation and improvement processes, and that's been quite helpful for a number of our member entities. I want to note an area of caution here about closed session, that the exceptions for closed session are narrowly construed by the public access counselors and the courts. It's better to defer a discussion than to meet in closed session in violation of the Open Meetings Act. You can defer to your staff for help on making those decisions. There's a process for convening in closed session, and it's important to comply with that process. The motion must be made in an open session of a properly noticed open meeting. The specific exemption supporting the closed session has to be cited in the motion. Your staff might script a motion for you to make sure you have the right language. There must be a roll-call vote with a majority of the quorum voting in favor of the closed session meeting. The motion may be to convene a closed session immediately, or you might designate a future time and date for that closed session. This is often used when there's a settlement conference on a lawsuit, or some reason to have the meeting at another time, perhaps to interview someone if you want to place somebody on a board, that type of thing. So if the exception of the Open Meetings Act applies, and the timing of it doesn't quite work, you can do it at another time in the future. There's some rules about doing it within three months and things like that, but you can set that up for another time and date. There has to be a verbatim or word-for-word recording, so audio recording of all closed sessions is required. Minutes of the closed session must be prepared, and we want to emphasize that no final action may be taken in closed session. And here's a hypothetical about closed sessions. Recall that one of the exceptions is the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific, specific employees. So a public body may hold a closed-session meeting to consider those. In this hypothetical, the Director of Human Resources filed a request for review with the public access counselor alleging that the board of trustees had violated the Open Meetings Act by discussing the termination of his employment in open session rather than in a closed session. What should the public access counselor decide? One, the PAC should decide that the board violated the Open Meetings Act because the board must discuss termination and employment of the employment contract in closed session under the 2(c) one exception. Two, that the public access counselor should conclude that the request for review does not assert facts alleging a violation of OMA. And three, the PAC should review the open session discussion to determine whether the board violated the director's employment contract. Any volunteers on this one? I'll take it. Number two, the PAC should conclude that the request for review does not assert facts alleging a violation of OMA. Keep in mind that the act says you may convene in closed session. The bias of the act is to have everything occur in the open. So there's no requirement to meet in closed session, even if there's an exception to the Open Meetings Act that applies. A couple of things about closed sessions that we wanted to mention. The municipality is not liable for disclosure of matters that are subject to exceptions for closed sessions, and there's no statutory provision for sanctions against an elected official for disclosing matters discussed in closed session, although that can be quite destructive to the interests of the municipality. We don't encourage that, but there is no statutory rule against it. Please remember that all of the discussions... Please remember that all of the discussions in closed sessions are recorded, and they're likely to be public someday. So maintaining the decorum of a regular public open meeting is important even when you're convening in closed session. We want to now provide a little bit of information about what's required to take final action. We mentioned that final action may not be taken in a closed session. The Open Meetings Act requires that matters that are considered for final action be on the agenda and recited sufficiently to inform the public of the matter. In a case that was ultimately decided by the Illinois Supreme Court, the Springfield School District had approved the separation agreement of the school superintendent. The agenda item included approval of resolution regarding the separation agreement and release between Superintendent D. Walter Milton Jr. and the Board of Education. During the open session meeting, the board president recited the general nature of the matter under consideration, a separation agreement and release, and specific details sufficient to identify the particular transaction. The separation agreement was between Dr. Milton and the board. A complaint filed on behalf of a local newspaper alleged the approval violated the Open Meetings Act, and that resulted in the public access counselor issuing a binding opinion that held the district violated the Act's requirements by failing to provide sufficient information to the public prior to taking final action. There had been some discussions, considerable discussions, of this issue in closed session prior to that open meeting. The district sought administrative review of that binding opinion, and the dispute was ultimately decided through extensive litigation. The Illinois Supreme Court determined that the agenda and the public recitation by the district was sufficient. You may use your closed session to develop a consensus of what action your council might take, but the final action has to be taken in an open meeting with sufficient information on the agenda and sufficient recitation at the meeting in order to support that vote. Any person may file a request for review within 60 days of an alleged violation of the Open Meetings Act. The public access counselor might do any number of things, may contact the municipality if action is warranted, seeking a response, or might resolve the matter without even contacting the municipality. I think they've had nearly 70,000 requests of the public access counselor since they started, and so sometimes you don't even hear from them. But if you do, you've got obligations to reply in a timely manner, and there's a number of rules that apply, and your staff is familiar with that process. The public access counselor might resolve that issue through mediation or direct advice to the municipality or issuing an advisory or a binding opinion. If the PAC finds the Open Meetings Act was violated, it could order any number of outcomes. It might direct the public body to release the closed session minutes and the recording. May require the public body to take final action on the disputed matter in a future meeting. Might require that the public body establish processes to avoid violations in the future. And in addition, the Open Meetings Act may be enforced through civil actions in circuit court. Misdemeanor prosecutions for violations of the Open Meetings Act is possible, but those are very rare. Wrapping up, we'd like to make sure that you have signed the attendance sheet that was circulated today so that you receive the certificate of completion of your training. This will be emailed to you. You should submit a copy of that certificate to your clerk and keep a copy of that for your own records. Remember to follow the procedures of the... and the requirements of the Open Meetings Act in your official capacity and interaction with other elected officials. And if you are uncertain, you should request assistance from your staff, your municipal attorney, the public access counselor, or the Illinois Municipal League. I want to thank you all for coming today. I hope I have... I know I didn't meet the barn burner expectations set by my boss, but I do hope that the information presented, both in the materials, in the slide deck, but also the sunshine laws, is helpful to you in your activities. And I'd like to invite any questions you may have, and we can address any of those if we're able to provide you an answer today. So if you have any questions.
James?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I want to go back to hypothetical number five.
Okay.
Which is the one about the contract that... the person being discussed in public about their dismissal.
Correct.
I'm curious, the third item was about the person's contract. Does it... Do people end up with contracts that stipulate that discussion about their discipline and so forth be held in a closed meeting?
So a couple of questions come out of that.
Okay.
You can discuss that issue in closed session because it's regarding the specific issues that are within that exception. Specific employees, employment, terms of the employment, things like that, you can discuss in closed session. Now, the public access counselor doesn't have any ability to look at a contract between an employee and the organization and determine whether that contract was violated. So that part of the answer was kind of a red herring.
I'm just curious if that happens, if people ask for that in their contract and municipalities agree to it.
Uh, we don't... I'm not aware of a contract that's that elaborate for an appointed municipal official. It's not a typical practice. I can't say it doesn't happen, but I'm not aware of such a contract that would get into that depth, particularly for like a public works director. Those are usually appointments, and any kind of agreements or employment letter are generally kept pretty simple.
All right. Thanks for indulging my curiosity.
No, this is the best part of the job, so thank you for coming, and thank you for asking a question. Thanks.
Chris?
Um, this might be for you, Diane and Carol. When we have lar... Uh, overflow of the public at one of our meetings, I'm thinking post-pandemic, do we have a designated alternative site for a meeting?
Not officially, but now we have the ability to... We also have room capacity per fire code that we have to adhere to, but we now have the video monitor out in the hall that has the same thing that we see on the monitor, so people can follow the meeting out in the lobby. If we exceed the capacity of the lobby, then I'm not sure where we would go. But at this point, we do have the lobby as an overflow area. So that's helped a lot, actually.
Um, the second question is, are we archiving video recordings on the website?
Yes.
Like, how long back? I mean, is it like a year, two years? Do you know?
Longer than that. I don't know the exact time, but I can find that out for you. Jaya?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions that are more for you as well, Mayor Marlin. The first, you mentioned there's a Open Meetings Act officer, I think, was the term that was used. Who would that be for us in our mana?
At this point, I'm not sure. Have we appointed... Phyllis. Phyllis is our Open Meetings Act officer.
Um, and then the questions about the updated procedures not being on the website, do we have a timeline of when those will be posted? Because I know there have been a lot of questions from residents.
The changes have been through ordinances that have been passed over the past six months, and our city code gets updated periodically, but it doesn't happen immediately after every ordinance is passed. But every ordinance is listed on the website, so that's available for people to see. And then the updated rules, for example, for public meetings, are reflected in the agenda immediately after the ordinance is passed. So if people want to know the absolute latest version, it would be what's printed on the agenda for a given meeting. Thank you. The code I discovered, one of the things I've discovered, our city code is a... It's a living document, but it doesn't always... It takes a while to get it updated in municipal. Mary Alice?
Thank you for the presentation.
Sorry, I'll turn on my mic there. Um, I had a question about meeting notification and the agenda items. So the special meeting is the same as a regular meeting 48 hours in advance, but a special meeting can only take action on the items on the agenda. So can you also rearrange? Are you allowed to rearrange the agenda as long as everything that was listed on the agenda is still covered?
So a couple of things. Special meetings, you can take action on items on the agenda, but you can only discuss those items.
Right, sorry.
Whereas in a regular meeting, you can discuss any topic that comes up. You can only take final action on things that are in the agenda. Okay? So the agenda defines what action can be taken at the meeting. And that's... And I'm sorry, I lost track of perhaps the other part of your question.
Yeah, my second part of the question was, if we're not... It sounds to me like you're not able to amend the agenda for a special meeting, but sometimes we will rearrange things. They still are listed on the agenda, but maybe we want to swap C for A and so forth. Is that allowed in a special meeting?
The local rules would guide your order of business for a meeting. In a special meeting, likely, I don't believe there's any sort of order of business for your special meetings. It might mock what goes on in your regular meetings. The chair of the meeting at most any meeting has the ability to adjust the order of items on the agenda. And most entities are going to accommodate that kind of activity by the chair. There are technical abilities of members of a body to call the chair's attention that they're out of order on the agenda and call for a point of order and get back to the order on the agenda. But for the most part, if the chair of the meeting wants to adjust the agenda for whatever reason, that's almost always accommodated unless there's a real good reason to object. There are procedural parliamentary ways to deal with those issues. The body makes the decision. So this body has declared for its regular meetings, there's an order of business, but generally would allow the chair to modify that for a specific meeting for good reason.
So does that modification of the order of the meeting have to be taken up for a vote?
Uh, I think that most entities do that without that level of formality. But in point of fact, if it's done without a vote, somebody can say, "point of order." I'd like to get sense where the body wants to go. So this is a rapport issue that builds up over time, and specific local rules can be adopted because municipalities can adopt rules for their proceedings. They don't have to follow any format. Many places adopt Roberts rules. That's what our parliamentary guide is based off of. But you can adopt specific rules, and there are a few areas where state law dictates some procedural issues, but that's very limited.
And then if you have not been able to get through the agenda, we have a cutoff time of 11:00 or 11:30?
10:30 with extension to 11:00.
Oh, extension to 11:00, sorry. If we can't get through all of the business on the agenda, you're allowed to reconvene before 24 hours with the same agenda, and you have to post the agenda again if you reconvene after 48 hours. Is that correct?
So I think the way to think about that is you can reconvene a meeting if you make note in the meeting that you're going to reconvene and you specify the time, date, and place. You can do that without having to worry about the 48-hour rule of the Open Meetings Act. If your reconvened meeting is more than 48 hours out, you could post a different agenda and do it that way.
So we don't have to post an agenda if we're just reconvening a meeting, even if it's over 24 hours?
I think you'd still post the agenda.
But do we have to meet the 48-hour?
But the 48-hour rule doesn't apply. The agenda posting requirement still applies.
Right, right.
But you're forgiven the 48-hour on a reconvening.
Okay.
And thank you for that question because it's not in our materials, but it will be. So thank you very much. That's excellent.
I think Sharice has a question as well. She has her hand raised.
Sharice is attending virtually.
I'm on Zoom.
Well, welcome.
Can I talk? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I have a question, number one, about the certification and me getting a certificate because I'm doing this via Zoom. Will I be able to do that?
Uh, the Illinois Municipal League is statutorily authorized to give this training. In that Act, it talks about electronic training by the public access counselor, but there's no reference to electronic training by the Illinois Municipal League. Because we want to be cautious and make sure we comply with all aspects of the Act, we don't intend to provide electronic opportunities to get a certificate. You can attain that certificate by online through the public access counselor, but it's our view that that's the only means for electronic compliance under the Act as the Act is expressed right now. So I'm sorry, we won't be able to issue a certificate to you.
Okay, so my other question is, having already done this before, do I... Do I... Am I required to do it? Am I required to be recertified or whatever?
No, the Act specifically provides that for elected officials, once you comply with the initial training for any purpose, you're compliant, and you don't have to re-comply.
Okay, so I don't have to... I don't need a certificate anyway?
If you have your certificate from that prior training, you may want to provide it to your clerk.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the question I have is, um... Regarding the closed meetings issue, if it would... Is it allowable for, for example, if we have appointments coming up and so on and so forth, that... Where we are getting information... Could we get information in a closed meeting regarding appointments and such? You know, in a closed meeting before we vote on them in a open meeting session?
There are specific exceptions for employees. Appointees to elected offices are also subject to a closed session. I don't know that committee appointees or other appointees are. I think that you can get information from your staff about appointees in advance without it being in a meeting setting. But as far as a deliberative discussion about appointments, you need to make sure that the specific role is covered by a specific exemption for the Act, and your staff can assist you with those specific issues.
Well, what I mean is, like, for example, if, um... If there's going to be an appointment or a... What's the word? Senior moment here. A promotion of sorts from, let's say, in the fire department, you have someone that's being appointed or promoted to the... To the lieutenant from a sergeant. And would it be possible for a closed session to take place regarding that? Because that does kind of involve employee.
Right.
That's what...
Yes, if the discussion's about a specific employee, it'd be my view, unless your staff has some other information, that that would comply under this 2(c) one exception for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee. That that would imply to dealing with the promotional issues regarding a specific employee.
So it would be proper to have a closed session meeting regarding that type of appointment or promotion?
From what you've described with regard to a specific employee and promotion, yes, that would be subject to that exception, and you could have that conversation in closed session if a majority of the body approved that closed session for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Time for one more question. Grace?
Um, as far as Open Meeting Act stuff with communicating with the public, are there no regulations with that? It's just subject to FOIA? Meaning that you could discuss city public... Or city business with the public, and there's not a limit on the number of people as long as it's like one official and the public? Is that correct?
Right. There's no restriction under the Open Meetings Act of an individual elected official having conversations with any... Right. There's no restriction under the Open Meetings Act of an individual elected official having conversations with any number of members of the public as long as they're not fellow elected officials of the same public body.
One more quick one if I could. How about communication one-on-one with multiple officials? Or is that get a blurry line? Like if I talked to Chandra about something and then talked to the mayor separately about the same thing, does that fall in there?
As long as you don't share a committee of less than five, you can speak to any other elected official of your public body. I don't think you have any small committees, so, so, because I think your only committee is committee of the whole, unless I'm missing something. So there's no issue with you meeting with another individual alderman or the mayor with regard to the Open Meetings Act. You're not a majority of a quorum of any public body, so you can meet and talk.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. In our next presentation, our assistant counsel, Ally Ahern, will speak about ethics and conflicts of interest. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Patrick. Yes, my name is Ally Ahern and I will be speaking on ethics and conflicts of interest laws and other issues that pertain to you as elected officials here in Urbana. Okay, so to start off with, why is it so important for you to know this information? Well, because municipal officials have an obligation to conduct themselves and all public business openly and ethically. As members of the public body who create the standards that govern your community, you are held to a high standard of ethical and law-abiding behavior yourselves. In order to be certain that you are meeting those high standards, it is necessary for you to learn about the statutory and common law constraints that exist and how they apply to you as you hold elected office. To provide a roadmap for this session, you will see on the screen in front of you on the topics I'll be touching on. And we'll also have some time following my remarks for questions as we have been doing. So what gives rise to a conflict of interest? This is when a private interest of an official directly or indirectly conflicts with the public interests that the official, yourselves, have a duty to uphold. Statutory requirements are, as suggested by the name and the word statutory, derived from statute. And there are a number of acts and provisions in Illinois state law that govern in this area. But in addition to those in statute, there are also what are referred to as common law conflicts of interest. And this is a body of law that comes from court cases and litigation. It applies to conflicts that are maybe not expressly laid out and, as we'll see, in statute, but will be deemed a conflict of interest based on the facts of the situation. As a complement to the material I will be presenting, included in your stack of publications is our Conflicts of Interest book. And this is a great resource to become familiar with and to reference throughout your time on city council. In addition to providing general foundational concepts and information, you might be able to find, you might be able to find an answer to a specific question in this book. And lastly, if you are, are wondering or do have a specific conflict that you're wondering about for yourself personally, a good person to talk to is your city attorney and/or city administrator might be able to help you. In addition to the possibility that an elected official may have a conflict of interest arising from their position, is also possible that you may have a conflict of duties which could arise from holding two positions at one time. This is also labeled as an incompatibility of office. And an incompatibility of office arises when a state statute specifically prohibits the occupant of one office from holding another office or where the duties of either office are such that the holder of one office cannot in every instance properly and fully faithfully discharge all the duties of the other office. And we'll go over some examples in the next slide. So basically, a conflict of interest is a conflict of an individual's private interest and the public's interest. A conflict of duties is about the functions of multiple offices. For example, as an alderman, you may have, your role as an alderman means you may want certain outcomes for your constituents. That may be at odds with what your role could be as a county official who may want certain outcomes for a county as a whole. If you find yourself in doubt over a conflict of interest scenario or possibly an incompatibility of office question, again, seek advice from a city attorney or retain counsel on the specific facts of the situation. Under the Public Officer Prohibited Activity Act, both conflicts of interest and conflicts of duties are prohibited by different clauses. Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, sorry about that. Thanks. Under the Public Officer Prohibited Activity Act, both conflicts of interest and conflicts of duties are prohibited by different clauses. This act governs if an elected official can hold any other office without a conflict of duties and what financial interests of an elected official are prohibited or allowed when it comes to municipal contracts. The act states that no alderman of any city during the term of office for which he or she is elected may accept, be appointed to, or hold any office by the appointment of the mayor unless the alderman is granted a leave of absence from such office or unless he or she first resigns from the office of alderman or unless the holding of another office is authorized by law. The Illinois Attorney General has issued opinions on a number of incompatible offices. And two examples that involve aldermen are the offices of alderman and county board member are incompatible as well as alderman and county zoning administrator are incompatible, just as examples. Do you find yourself considering running for a position on a different board or for a county position? You need to be aware that there are some restrictions or certain measures that need to be taken in order to avoid a conflict of duties or holding incompatible offices. This may include taking a leave of absence from your position or even a resignation. This act also prohibits the direct or indirect financial interest in contracts. And this includes in your own name, in the name of another person, association, trust, or corporation. And one, and then this also may seem obvious, but it is prohibited activity under this act to promise to vote in any one way because of a gift or money that someone gives you. As we know, that is called a bribe and it is illegal. Later, I will go into a little more detail about the ban on gifts and the exceptions to that restriction. The Public Officer Prohibited Activities Act is really written to prohibit public officials from having financial interests and interests in contracts that would influence and potentially corrupt their duties as public officials. In essence, it restricts municipal officials from having financial interests in any contract, work, or business of the municipality. Keeping your work as an elected official totally separate from financial opportunities is the safest way to conduct yourselves as an alderman. However, there are a few limited exceptions for when a member of city council with a financial interest in a business deal may contract with the city. The first exception is a contract may be entered into even if a member of the board holds an interest in a contracting business if the following conditions are met. This first example will describe an instance where a board member may have some ownership interest in a business that is seeking a contract with the municipality. The first element that needs to be met is that the member's share in ownership is less than seven and one-half percent. And then you need to look at the amount of the contract. If the contract exceeds $1,500, the contract must be awarded after sealed bids to the lowest responsible bidder. But if the contract is less than $1,500, it may be awarded without bidding. And then you also need to look to see if the amount of the contract would create a situation where one entity is awarded more than $25,000 within one fiscal year. As so long as it does not, there may be an exception. And additionally, the interested member at this, at this time must publicly disclose their interest and abstain from deliberating in any manner or voting on the award of the contract. We sort of touched on this earlier, the abstention from voting. This is an area where it is required that you publicly disclose your interest and abstain from both deliberating and voting on the matter. The contract then must be approved by a majority vote of those holding office, not including that interested member. The second exception applies to a contract for lower amounts of money. The interested member of the governing body, you know, for our purposes here today, an alderman, can contract if the following conditions are met. It's that the contract amount does not exceed $2,000 for one single contract or an aggregate amount of $4,000 to one entity within one fiscal year. Additionally, the interested member again must publicly disclose the interest and abstain from deliberating and voting on the contract. Lastly, same as prior, the contract must be approved by a majority vote of those holding office, not including the person who has abstained. And lastly, a third exception that I'll go into in detail, an interested member can, can contract to provide materials, merchandise, property, services, or labor if the interested member of the governing body has a less than 1% share in the ownership and the company's stock is traded on a nationally recognized securities market. Again, the interested member would publicly disclose their interest, abstain from deliberating and voting on the award of the contract, and the vote would have to be approved by a majority of the members holding office. Additionally, under this act, a council member is not deemed interested if he or she owns or holds an interest of 1% or less through a mutual fund in a company doing business with the municipality and that company's stock is traded on a nationally recognized securities market. An example of this type of situation may be an alderman owns, for example, some stock in GM. It would not prohibit the municipality from then contracting to buy Chevy pickup trucks for the municipal fleet. And also, exceptions may apply for public utility contracts and for doing business with a local bank if a member of the city council is affiliated with either entity. If any of these exceptions may apply to you, it would just be in your best interest to examine the details of your interests and your financial interests and possibly discuss those with your city attorney or your own personal attorney if you have any questions or concerns. It is worth noting that there may be serious criminal consequences to a violation of this act. That's why it's so important to make sure you consult with proper legal advice. An improper conflict of interest in a contract or the holding of incompatible offices is a class four felony. And that is in addition to the loss of your position as an elected official. A helpful way to navigate these situations is to maybe take a step back and ask yourself before entering into a contract or voting on it, if you think you have some interest, is think, okay, if this came out and was a front-page newspaper story, would I be comfortable with that? If you feel that you would not want that to be the case, that's a time that you just need to not vote or take the proper measures that we've discussed. Then you can protect yourself if you have your doubts or confusion about interests conflicting with that of the city by, as we mentioned, discussing with the city attorney or city administrator. Common law conflicts of interest are, again, not a violation of statute, but they may arise in situations where the activity of the, doesn't violate the Public Officer Prohibited Activities Act, but is nonetheless a conflict of interest when the facts of the situation are examined. A conflict could arise when official action could result in a personal advantage or disadvantage to a member of the governmental body. And a member of the governmental body with a personal interest coming before the city council is disqualified under common law from voting or otherwise acting on the matter. Your duty as an alderman, it's best to think of, is to act in the best interest of the residents and not of yourself. As an example, you can consider a situation where an alderman is also maybe a real estate agent by profession but is asked in his or her capacity as an alderman to consider the annexation of property to form a new subdivision. The alderman realtor may see an opportunity to act as a broker for the developer on the project. Because the direct interest of the alderman is not in the annexation agreement because they're not the developer of the project, but they nonetheless would, could potentially have a financial relationship with helping broker the deal, there may be potential for a financial gain to the alderman. And that is where that could clearly interfere with that person's ability to objectively weigh the merits of the proposal. In such an example, the interested member should recuse him or herself from discussion, disclose the interest, and abstain from voting. Often, as a member of city council, you will be required to approve contracts. When it comes to these public contracts, all prospective bidders and the general public must have access to the same information and same specifications about the proposed public contracts. Careful attention must be given to the provisions that govern the contracting process for bidding or awarding contracts for goods, services, or construction projects. The examples listed on the slide are all prohibited by the Illinois Criminal Code and essentially many of them just boil down to any attempt or actual giving of someone an unfair advantage in the bidding process. The first, the first item listed here, bid rigging. This is when a local official with intent to influence a contract award provides information to a bidder concerning the price or other material terms of the bid that would otherwise not be disclosed to a competitor. Others include facilitating kickbacks or bribes, again, prohibited activity. And last on the list here is improperly allowing change orders for large amounts of money. Either an increase or decrease in $10,000 is the trigger amount or that changed the deadline of a project by 30 days or more in either direction. Either extending a project 30 days or finishing it 30 days before scheduled. If substantial changes to a project are warranted, just, you need, there is a proper procedure to follow and that is what you should follow in order to properly approve them. Those changes should, the following condition should be met, that the circumstances that necessitated the change were unforeseeable at the time the contract was signed. The change is germane to the original contract and the change is in the best interest of the local government. As an alderman, take care and notice if someone is approaching you asking about city business outside of an open meeting setting. One way to make sure you don't unintentionally disclose any information that you shouldn't is to refer inquisitive parties to direct their questions back to staff. This way, you don't ever provide information to one person that hasn't been provided to the public at large. There are also criminal penalties, including class three or four felonies, depending on the infraction of this act. And it is the Illinois Criminal Code that places various restrictions on bidders and contractors, public officials and employees of the state and units of local government involving the award and solicitation of public contracts. As I touched upon a few times, I think other people have, you have a wonderful support staff. We've already met some of them today, just the morning we've been here. And those are the people who can answer questions to the public about the bid process and handling. And again, that can shield you from having to give one person any information that might not be available to everyone. You know, to, your role as an alderman is budgetary and for policy approval and it shouldn't be focused on answering questions about bids or, you know, paperwork submitting, things of that nature. Another statute that governs ethics is the State Officials and Employee Ethics Act. And we know that this involves ethics because it's right there in the title. The main purpose of this act is to regulate prohibited political activities by public officials. officials and the giving and receiving of gifts by those who do business with them. Employees are prohibited from intentionally performing prohibited political activity during any compensated time, and that includes lunchtime. But compensated time is not, does not include vacation, personal, or paid time off. Essentially, the meaning of this act is to keep your political activities separate from your role as an alderman. Do not engage in prohibited political activity on compensated time. Do not use city resources for the benefit of any campaign for elective office, and do not solicit or require any government officials or employees to participate in prohibited activity as part of their job. Under the act, there are fifteen defined prohibited activities and six defined prohibited sources. Part of the state statute requires local governments to adopt an ordinance to these effects, and the local ordinance can be no less strict than the state law. Here in Urbana, we've touched on that the code might be, the online code may be lagging a little bit, but I've found that you have the City Officials and Employee Ethics and Political Activity Ordinance, which governs these topics. You know, examples of prohibited activities are preparing for, organizing, or participating in political meetings, political rallies, political demonstrations, soliciting contributions, or managing or working on a campaign for elective office on, in city property. A prohibited source means any person or entity who is seeking official action by a member of the city council, or does business or seeks to do business with the member or officer, or conducts activities regulated by the member or officer of city council, has interests that may be substantially affected by the performance or nonperformance of the official duties, or is registered to require, or is registered or required to be registered with the Secretary of State under the Lobbyist Registration Act. And lastly, a prohibited source is also an agent, a spouse, or an immediate family member who is living with a prohibited source. Violations of this can result in a Class A misdemeanor, a fine from one thousand to five thousand dollars, and employee discipline or discharge. The State Officials and Employees Ethics Act includes a gift ban, which I briefly touched on earlier. This applies to elected officials in that they are banned from intentionally soliciting or accepting gifts from a prohibited source. The Urbana ordinance provides that no elected official and no spouse of or immediate family member living with the elected official shall intentionally solicit or accept any gift from any prohibited source described herein, or which is otherwise prohibited by law or ordinance, and no prohibited source shall intentionally offer or make a gift that violates this section. Okay, so what does that mean? Can you never accept anything from anyone in this town? Again, no, that is not the intent, and there are a number of exceptions listed here, and we'll go into some of those as well. You know, for one example, it may be that a local business who is interested in contracting with the city invites you to a lunch, and this may be proper if the meal is less than seventy-five dollars. One of the exceptions is food or refreshments not exceeding seventy-five dollars on any single day per person. Additionally, gifts from friends and family are also okay if they are not made to influence you in your official capacity. Also, gifts from one source of up to a hundred dollars in one calendar year are permitted just so long as you do not go over that threshold. For, by way of example, just do one, and I won't put anyone on the spot, I'll give you the answers right after. Say, a computer vendor to the city is also your best friend from high school. This person offers you four tickets to a baseball game for you and your family, and this cost is well over a hundred dollars. Can you go? Well, you know it's over a hundred dollars, which is the limit for one calendar year, but this is, but she offered this in, for no reason that has to do with her capacity as the computer vendor and is just based solely on your friendship of years past. This is okay. Another, another example, can you sit in the mayor's office and use her phone to make campaign calls? No, no, you cannot use municipal property for political purposes. If you find yourself to inadvertently have accepted a gift, there are ways to avoid liability in this situation. There is a way to cure a violation of the gift ban. You, you know, whatever the situation was, maybe you were caught off guard and someone wanted to give you something and you thought it would be rude or uncomfortable to refuse them to their face, you can, you can accept it, knowing that you can later contact this person and explain the prohibition on accepting it, and you can arrange to return that item or donate either that item or the dollar amount equal to that item to a charity. Lastly, report this entire, if something like this does happen and you have given a gift back or cured the situation in some way, this would be a time to report the entire transaction to your staff, their ethics advisor or the city administrator, so that there is a record of what happened, and doing this will promptly remove any problem with trying to recall what happened, if it's whether it's a few months or a year down the road. So note the people involved, the gift or the amount, what was returned or donated, and to what entity and what dates this happened, and that will provide a clear trail, paper trail of what happened. The Illinois Governmental Ethics Act requires specified public officials to file a statement of economic interest, and this requirement applies to people who are elected to office in a unit of local government and also the candidates for nomination or election to that office, which, for those of you sitting in this room, you had to file as a candidate, and you'll have to file on an annual basis as a sitting member of city council. So this is just what the form looks like on the Secretary of State's website, and that's, this is how it looks today. It's worth noting that the General Assembly is currently considering a number of ethics reform bills, and some of these include a change to this form, expanding possibly some of the requirements. And as you will hear shortly from my colleague, the IML Legislative Department is tracking these bills and will provide updates on measures that pass that may ultimately impact municipal officials at the end of the session. Public officers commit official misconduct under the Illinois Criminal Code when, in their official capacities, they commit any of the following acts. Intentionally or recklessly failing to perform any mandatory duty as required by law, knowingly performing an act which they know they are forbidden by law to perform, or with intent to obtain a personal advantage for themselves or another, they perform an act in excess of their lawful authority, or soliciting or knowingly accepting a fee or reward for the performance of any act which they know is not authorized by law. This statute just should not be taken lightly because even minor infractions can lead to a felony conviction. I'll touch on one Illinois Supreme Court misconduct case that was decided in 2008. In this case, a mayor had used a municipal credit card for personal expenses, but paid the credit card bill back as it came in with his own money. He argued that because the municipality was not out any money, that the prosecution was overzealous and out of proportion with the natures of his actions. The Illinois Supreme Court disagreed with that and upheld the conviction, holding that there is no exception for even small amounts of money to this law, and the fact that the expenses were on that municipal card at all, even temporarily, was enough to sustain the conviction. So, we also touched on this earlier, that, and I know from navigating your website, that each alderman has a designated email address. This is great. This is your official email address for city business. Use your city address for city business, and on the flip side, use your personal email address for your personal correspondences. Sending emails from your personal account that relate to public business may open up those to disclosure requirements under FOIA, Freedom of Information Act, and this could require further inspection of any correspondence sent from that email address. So I think we kind of touched on that earlier. If you start crossing the accounts, you may open up your personal account to exposure or discovery. And just a short note on social media accounts, you know, these are commonplace, obviously, for local officials and local municipalities as well. As an individual, if you maintain your own private pages, you know, you're entitled to do that, and you may post your own personal thoughts and expressions on those pages, but I think we all know that anything you put up online can be found by anyone else pretty much in the public or will be found. So just keep that in mind, that it may be seen by a much larger audience. And then if you are using the Urbana city Facebook page or commenting on public pages, just make sure that you're in line with the guidelines of your city's social media policy, which is a great tool, then I also know is available based off your website. And just a few final thoughts from me. I hope you will spend some time going through the resources that we have provided you with today to familiarize yourself with the subject matter generally and to get familiar with your own city ordinances. As I mentioned earlier, your city ordinance is the City Officials and Employee Ethics and Political Activity Ordinance. This incorporates many of the same prohibitions as in state statute. To keep, and rely, and again, to reiterate, rely on your staff to complement your roles and to take, to field questions and to be a resource to you. What I said at the beginning, I'll hearken back to now, you are held to a high standard of ethical behavior by your community and the constituents who voted for you. With this information, I hope you now have a better understanding or an adequately refreshed understanding of the requirements that apply to you as an elected official and how you can successfully do your work as an alderman without worrying about any violations. Now, for a final slide on questions, you can ask your city attorney questions, ask your ethics advisor, and ask us at the Illinois Municipal League. Whether you are brand-new to local government or a returning member on this council, you never know what issues may arise. I'm sure you know that a lot better than I do. If you have any questions pertaining to ethics standards, have a discussion with your city attorney. That person will be in the best position to weigh the specifics of a lot of inquiries as they relate specifically to the city of Urbana. And of course, please contact IML. We are here to be a resource to you. With that, I'll open it up if anyone has any questions for me, and we'll have a few minutes to do that. Shandra.
Hi, thank you, Ally, for your presentation. In your scenario about the baseball tickets, is that, if you accept them, are you supposed to report that to anyone, or it's just because that's your friend, you've taken these tickets?
In that scenario, it's just, you wouldn't need to report that, it's not a violation because of the nature of your relationship.
And I would just expand on that. So if your best friend just happens to have four tickets to the World Series, and the face value of those is twenty-four dollars apiece, so under the maximum amount allowed, that may be a different situation because the market value really should be what is considered when you're looking at the value of the item. So if those are selling for five hundred dollars on the street corner because it's the Super Bowl or the World Series or some significant, you know, any Illini game, then that needs to be considered. So it's not just the face value of a ticket or the cost of some item. You should look at and consider the market value also. And if you think there's a question about it, or there could be a question, or it was a good friend of yours in high school, but you haven't seen each other in twenty-five years, probably the best thing is to defer.
Thank you again for the presentation. I was wondering whether, either in the materials or if you have any general guidance for those of us who work with nonprofits in our community, so that we're, we might not be concerned about receiving or giving financial support, but like I said, I know a number of us either have worked with nonprofits or may have current associations with nonprofits who might be coming to either the city or the township board for grants, and whether that's something that's covered somewhere in these materials.
Is it okay if I answer?
Yeah.
I told Ally I wanted to answer some questions, and she's very defensive about it. She said she wanted to answer all of them, so it's okay with you, I'll take this one. That is very common. So obviously, you're all engaged in the community and you're involved in things, and that means you're probably affiliated with some nonprofit organization. You might be on the board of a nonprofit organization, or you might even be employed by one. You may be the executive director of, of an entity. If the, if the public body is awarding a grant to an entity that you are a member of, you have no direct financial benefit, I mean, other than the general membership that is improved by the organization. So that's not a conflict. If you're the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club and they receive an annual award here for their operations, then you would be receiving a direct, at a minimum, and indirect, but probably very clearly a direct financial benefit, and you would have a conflict there. If you are wanting to support an organization that you're just aware of or generally involved with or have attended an event to, again, no conflict. Is there a direct, easy to answer, or an indirect, maybe your spouse, partner, or someone in your family, immediate family, has a direct benefit, then, then there is a conflict.
Thank you.
Who is our ethics advisor?
Michelle Brooks, she's the attorney in the HR department.
Okay, thank you. And I had another two, that's good. Is a commission a conflict of interest in our Urbana system? Being on a Urbana city commission and a council person?
Well, not knowing what your commission structure is, it may be that you are on the commission by virtue of being a member of the council?
Some positions on commissions are by virtue of being a member of the council, like the Farmers Market Advisory Board, or the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, or the Library Board. I'm not sure about the sustainability. Were you, well, obviously, you weren't appointed as a council member to the Sustainability Commission. So we'll have to look, what we'll look at is the ordinance establishing the commission because each commission was set up at a different time with different rules related to the membership.
And we're actually dealing, or we have dealt with this issue recently, similarly elsewhere. If you, if there is a conflict, an incompatibility in the office, when you are sworn into your new office, you will by virtue of that have resigned the previous incompatible office. So whether you know it or not, because you have now accepted the latter office as your primary. So if you were appointed to the Sustainability Commission and there is a conflict, when, once you take the oath as an alderman, that would be vacated. But you'll need to check your local stuff on that. Most of the municipal commissions have a role for aldermen, and generally, those are advisory, non-voting members, ex officio, and most of those commissions don't take final action, they all roll up through the council. So the council is the one that would expend funds or would adopt policy or something. So I need to refer that back to the, to the city.
Do we have time for one more?
Sure.
As far as social media accounts, I was wondering about a political social media account, you know, like the city having its account, or the mayor, or, you know, having a council person account and sharing things that way if there was a policy, or thoughts on that?
There, there may be specific provisions in the Urbana ordinance. Generally speaking, if you have a, the things you want to keep in mind with a designated council person account is that you can't really filter what people are saying on it. So if it's open to comments, you have to keep the good and the bad comments up. You can't filter out based on the content of what people are saying. You could turn them off entirely and have no comment, and just you would post, you know, your own information on, on your Facebook or what have you. And then in addition, IML has a social media model policy, and that goes into what a city, it goes into both of those things, what a sitting council person, how they should conduct themselves on their own accounts, and as, and the city as a entity, its own accounts.
Thank you.
James.
Thank you again for your presentation. I think I heard this as you were talking about the statement of economic interest. Everyone sitting here has filed what they need to for this year by virtue of their candidacy, right? We won't have to refile as elected members sworn in.
Correct. For the year up until the next, you're... For the year up until the next, you're, I believe your statement that you filed will cover your term.
That was in anticipation of being elected, right? Okay, thank you.
Because it's based off the previous year's interests.
Not the guidance that the county clerk is giving us.
Well, so the, well, it depends on what, so there's, there's a couple of right answers here. So you filed your statement of economic interests when you filed as a candidate, okay? If you did that during this calendar year, then it satisfies the requirement because they're required to be filed every year. Now, if you filed it last year because you filed your petitions in December, that's not this year. So you may be required to file another one now. And those are generally by the first of May annually, so.
So there's an interesting question. Since five of us are new and won't be sworn in until May 3rd, we're creating the need to file, how is that handled?
Well, that, so if you had a primary, I'm guessing you filed last December?
November.
November, okay. You know, if the county clerk is advising that you need to do it, then you can do it. There is no harm in doing it. And if you're taking office on May 3rd, you know, you should just, I, I would say, we don't have the specifics of your exact situation. So I would ask your city attorney to offer an opinion on that, and she or he can get that information from the county clerk. We advise people, I do all the time, you can update your statement of economic interests at any time. You can file it every month if you have something to add. And it's always, can you go back to that slide? It's always okay to overfile. So if you have something that, if you see here, yeah, that's it. So on section two, or section six, or section eight, you know, if, it says, you know, list the, an entity, if you think you're going to, or you think you might have, you can always provide more on there. So I tell people, the cover-up is always worse than the crime. It's usually depending on the crime. But if you put the information on here, even if you think you don't have to, if you want to release it, then go ahead. And if you want to update your form, you can do that at any time. Because providing more information is never a problem. And that way, there can be no question about it. But as far as your own timing, I would suggest that you get an opinion from the city attorney.
Follow-up for this one.
Grace.
Is there any group or entity you can talk to about this form? Like, is that through the Illinois Municipal League if people have questions about this form?
Well, the Illinois Secretary of State receives the form, but I don't know that they will give you much advice on it. You could ask the Attorney General's Office, or you could ask the municipal attorney for an opinion. If you have a personal issue, you can always also ask your personal attorney. So you can get advice from any number of places. However, the filing entity, which is the Secretary of State, is not going to give you any, they're just going to say, look, all we do is file it, you know, give it to us, we stamp it, and we send you the receipt back. The county clerk is the same. So I would suggest either getting a legal opinion from the municipal attorney or from your personal attorney, depending on what the issue is.
Yeah, it's just a complicated form.
Well, and if I may, it's, this is my opinion. It is, and I, so I say this not to disagree with you. It is not a complicated form, it's just a very confusing form. And so that leads to complication. And what we have been asking is for them to improve this form to make it more easily understandable so that you know what you have to fill out. A lot of people fill this out and they put NA, not applicable, on just about all of it, sign it, never think about it again. And then somebody gets in trouble. So we have, I've testified before the Illinois Joint Commission on Ethics Reform for the last year and recently in the last month about this form. So it's going to be improved, and Ally indicated that. We don't know what that's going to be yet, but we're hoping that it'll just be much easier for you to complete. However, the state of Illinois is involved in that process. So, you know, let's not hold out too much hope. But that's why I said it's always okay to put more on there. For instance, you, if you think you're going to have something that's going to exceed it, then put it on there. If you have something that you just want to say that later, hey, I disclosed that, put it on there. Even if there's not a conflict. Don't attach your tax return, but, you know, just use common sense.
And if you hold a liquor license, you must recuse yourself from voting on liquor license applications. Every one, every single one.
Yep. And that's a local issue, because some communities, you can hold a certain class license and not other class license. So those are things why it's always good to ask your local attorney. So we're mostly on time. Unless there's any other questions, we'd like to give you just another quick break of about five minutes. And then we'll come back with, I'm not sure, our legislative update is next, and then we'll close up shop. So we'll take just five minutes, Mayor?
Five minutes.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mitchell Remmert. I serve as the Director of Legislative Affairs for the Illinois Municipal League. I'm here today to speak with you about our legislative activities and to provide an update on issues that IML is actively involved in at the General Assembly this year. Our Legislative Department facilitates the advocate portion of IML's mission. At the most basic level, we do this by interacting with legislators, crafting and supporting legislation and policies that are beneficial to municipal governments and opposing legislation and policies that are harmful. We're missing some slides. Our advocacy is guided by our board-adopted legislative principles and policies, as well as our core values, which are to promote local decision-making, preserve home rule powers, oppose unfunded mandates, preserve the rights of municipalities to decide employee wages and benefits, and protect state shared revenues. These core values are reflected in our state legislative agenda as well as our federal legislative agenda, which we develop in consultation with our policy committees, Legislative Committee, Executive Committee, and our Board of Directors each year. A copy of each agenda is provided in your packet today. I'd like to start with the state legislative agenda, which consists of 12 items, whose subject areas range from utilities and meetings to pensions and environment. Each of these items is filed in at least one chamber of the General Assembly, and the agenda includes proposals that would do the following. Allow non-home rule communities to impose stormwater utility fees. Eliminate or reduce the state sales tax administrative fee. Exempt local pass-through revenues from provisions of the Grant Accountability and Transparency Act, also known as GATA. Permit local authority to conduct remote meetings under the Open Meeting Act without a governor-declared disaster declaration. Allow non-home rule communities to implement a sales tax by ordinance or resolution. Remove municipal liability in the event of a cyber attack. Re-amortize downstate public safety pension funds to 2050. And allow non-home rule municipalities outside of Cook County to implement a motor fuel tax. In addition to our state advocacy, we also directly engage with members of Congress on federal issues that impact our members. And we partner with the National League of Cities, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and the Illinois Congressional Delegation to advance the interests of municipalities and shape federal policy. Our goals in this regard are reflected in our 2021 federal legislative agenda, which includes the following items. Preserving qualified immunity at the federal level. Supporting direct unrestricted federal aid to communities regardless of size to allow them to respond to and recover from the COVID-19 public health crisis. Supporting efforts to craft a fiscally responsible federal transportation and infrastructure funding plan. Supporting legislation that would preserve the regulatory rights of states and municipalities with regard to the deployment of small wireless facilities. Now, the development of these agendas begin with our policy committees. We have six such committees comprised of municipal officials from across the state and covering different subject areas. These include general governance, land use, public health and safety, personnel and pensions, public work and transportation, and revenue and taxation. Our policy committees include mayors, municipal attorneys, aldermen, trustees, clerks, public works directors, and others. And during the spring legislative session, which runs from January to May, these committees serve as a resource to IML, offering input on various legislative proposals before the General Assembly. Over the summer and fall, these committees help IML staff research and vet ideas from municipal officials that may become part of our next state legislative agenda. Our legislative staff compiles these proposals, which are then further reviewed by our Legislative Committee and Executive Committee before being recommended to our Board of Directors for final approval. Once approved, we have these proposals drafted as legislation. Then we engage with senators and representatives to have them introduced in the Illinois House and Senate. If this is something you think you may be interested in the future, we regularly provide a form each summer and fall to all municipal officials to complete if they so choose. Just let me know if this is something you may be interested in or keep out, keep an eye out for our solicitation, which we provide typically through our e-newsletters. In addition to our state, in addition to our legislative agenda, we regularly review every legislative proposal that's filed in the General Assembly to determine whether or not it may be of interest to municipal governments. So far this session, legislators have filed over 7,500 bills, resolutions, and proposed constitutional amendments. And of these, we have taken a position on more than 1,600 items. As you know or will soon become aware, municipal government is affected by a broad category of issues. We've developed a general list of categories that we use to label legislation that's before the General Assembly. The list on this slide is not an exhaustive list, but it does demonstrate some of the categories that we use. So whether it's zoning, utilities, environment, gaming, pensions, or cannabis, we will take a position on a legislative proposal if it impacts municipal officials or municipal operations. Then on the topic of positions, we utilize six different bill positions depending on the nature of the legislation at hand. There are support, oppose, no position, neutral, under review, and bill of interest. I'd like to go through each of these and explain what they mean if you see them on one of our bill review reports. Supporting a bill and opposing a bill is pretty straightforward. We'll support an item if we believe it'll benefit municipal governments. We'll oppose an item if we believe it'll harm municipal governments. We may offer no position on a bill if we believe that it may be of interest to municipal governments, but this may indicate a belief by us that it is unlikely to garner sufficient support for passage, doesn't impose a harm or benefit, or there's no need to take a position at this time. We'll go neutral on legislation if it may have an impact on municipalities but affects municipalities different based on demographics, geographic location, or other differential issues. In these cases, municipalities may want to elect to convey their individual positions to legislators. We might also take a neutral position if the final bill is the result of negotiations involving IML or other organizations, which resulted in objections being resolved towards municipal interests. So neither a support nor oppose position is necessary. Sometimes we'll label a, a bill as being under review. Specifically, these are items that we are seeking additional information before developing a formal position. We regularly provide updates when we take a formal position on bills or amendments that were previously designated as being under review. And then finally, we might label some items as being a bill of interest. These are bills that we may take a position on at a later point during the legislative session but have not yet been thoroughly reviewed or reached a designated position. Like to pause here, you might be wondering how we take a bill position. You know, as I mentioned, we have our board-adopted principles and policies. We can most often determine our position based on, on that. We regularly gather a small group of IML staff to review all legislation filed in a given day, and we propose preliminary positions. They're then further vetted by IML Executive Director Brad Cole. In some instances, Brad may consult with the IML Board President to get additional input before we take a formal position as an organization. And in some extreme cases, we may solicit the input of our entire Board of Directors. So each item that's filed in the General Assembly can be searched on our website. That's IML.org/billtracking. This includes bills that we may not have taken a position on. You can search for legislation by topic, by bill number, or the effect it may have, such as if it imposes a mandate, a revenue reduction, or a preemption of municipal authority. Our website also hosts a bill page for each individual bill. For example, the slide before you shows our bill page for our proposal that would exempt municipal pass-through revenues from provisions of GATA. After taking a position on a bill, we will engage directly with legislators and legislative staff to communicate our position. In many cases, we'll offer spoken or written testimony before legislative hearings. We'll also meet with stakeholders who support or oppose issues of concern and draft proposed amendments to the bills in order to remedy any concerns we may have. You know, I would like to note that we have a great working relationship with the city of Urbana state legislators. This includes Representatives Carol Ammons and Brad Halbrook, and state Senators Chapin Rose and Scott Bennett. Our advocacy efforts are often supplemented by additional resources, including position papers and fact sheets that we develop on a variety of legislative issues. Your packets today include examples of fact sheets that we've provided as a resource for you. And I'd now like to provide a little information on how you can register your position on a particular bill. When a bill goes before a legislative committee that impacts your community, you can register your support or opposition as an individual or a member of the city council on the item at the General Assembly's website. That's ILGA.gov. So the slide before you, the left image will show you the landing page for the General Assembly website. And this is going to contain a lot of resources about state statutes, special reports, daily schedules, audio and video links, and information on bills. And from this website, you can go to the General Assembly's dashboard. That's the screen on the right. The dashboard will allow you to see committees scheduled for a particular day, week, or month, and the bills that are assigned to that committee. And from there, you can file your position on a particular legislative item. In my experience, state legislators are very responsive to their local communities. Emails and witness slips on legislation are, are good, but I've found that a, a call from a local official to a state legislator can make the difference between them supporting and opposing a bill. So you wield a lot of authority in your position, and it can really help our efforts and your efforts before the General Assembly. So now that I've, you know, generally explained what we do and how we do it, I'd like to include some subjects that have surfaced at the General Assembly this year. You know, as I previously mentioned, there have been more than 7,500 items introduced, and we're currently tracking more than 1,600. I just want to highlight some of the big issues. Some of the items that are tracked include 304 bills that would impose new mandates on local governments and 118 proposals that would preempt municipal authority. We've included those proposals in two reports that we regularly publish, our Proposed State Mandates Report and our Proposed Legislation Imposing Local Preemption Report. Both of those reports are available on our website. Our general website's IML.org. We also have a legislative page, that's IML.org-legislative. You can find both of those reports on there. Since January, both chambers of the General Assembly voted on changes to the procedural rules that allow them to conduct committee hearings virtually. We've participated in many of these committees, offering testimony on several legislative proposals. And one ongoing topic for consideration is the issue of criminal justice reforms. So as many of you are probably aware, in January, the General Assembly met for a final six-day session. This is commonly known as a lame-duck session. And the primary focus of the final days of the 101st General Assembly was a package of legislation developed and introduced by the Illinois Legislative Black Caucus. These proposals were divided among four legislative subject areas or pillars consisting of economic equity, education, healthcare and human services, and policing reforms. The policing reform pillar was House Bill 3653, and that was signed into law as Public Act 101652. During the negotiations on this particular bill, we were successful in advocating for the removal of penalties against the local government distributive fund, as well as the preservation of qualified immunity. Despite the passage of this bill, several more proposals have been introduced this year that will affect municipal governments. We've compiled all of our resources that we have on this topic, including fact sheets and a list of introduced bills and more, and that's all at IML.org. and a list of introduced bills, and more, and that's all at iml.org/policingreforms. This image here shows you the landing page. Like I said, that's a great resource to check out if you're looking for more information on this particular topic. Another critical issue that we are engaged in is downstate public safety pension amortization. We've been involved in this topic for years, working towards the reform and consolidation of downstate public safety pension funds. As you might be aware, municipalities with a population of 5,000 or more and that have a police and fire department are required to create an Article III Pension Fund for police officers and an Article IV Pension Fund for firefighters. There's currently more than 650 of these funds in the state, and they cover more than 41,000 public safety pension participants. In 2019, we were successful in advocating for the consolidation of the investment function of these funds. This will improve investment returns, eliminate unnecessary and redundant administrative costs, and reduce the burden on local taxpayers. However, we feel that work remains to ensure the fund's fiscal viability. Under current law, municipal employers are required to contribute to these funds an amount sufficient to bring the total assets of the fund up to 90% of the total actuarial liabilities by the end of municipal fiscal year 2040. And the fact of the matter is that this is the shortest amortization schedule when you compare it to any statewide, state-administered, or Chicago-based fund. So we're pursuing legislation that would extend that amortization schedule to 2050 or later. We've introduced one proposal, that's House Bill 308, sponsored by Representative West, that would accomplish this goal. We think that this will provide much-needed relief to affected communities, and provide a responsible path towards funding these pensions. This is another topic where we have a dedicated landing page for resources. That's iml.org/pensions. So feel free welcome to check that out as well. Another issue before the General Assembly includes legislation that would mandate the inventory and replacement of lead service lines. These are underground plumbing lines running from the city's water main to private residents that provide water service. And in some communities, some of these lines are made out of lead. We've been engaged with environmental advocacy groups and others for more than two years trying to find a path forward on this topic. We maintain that any plan to mandate the replacement of these lines must include a company revenue and take into consideration the administrative capability, fiscal ability, and requisite staffing of affected communities, and any current plans that may be in effect. Since the start of this year, we have met weekly with stakeholders on this topic, and hope to have an agreed-upon proposal prior to the end of this legislative session. If you're curious, the current proposals under consideration include Senate Bill 556 and Senate Bill 1168, sponsored by Senator Bush, as well as House Bill 3739, sponsored by Representative Robinson. Another critical issue that may be of interest to your community is the Small Wireless Facility Deployment Act. This act regulates the installation of telecommunications hardware that delivers 5G wireless technology. This hardware is typically deployed in municipal rights-of-way on municipal infrastructure such as utility poles. This act originally took effect on June 1, 2018, and is set to expire or sunset on June 1 of this year. And due to the impact of the legislation on municipalities throughout the state, we believe that it's critical that any future extensions of this act protect municipal interests. So to that end, IML is advocating for greater authority for municipal officials when it comes to requiring this hardware be located on alternative structures, and ensuring that the equipment meets or exceeds all applicable safety regulations. While there's nearly one dozen proposals filed on this topic, IML is continuing to meet with industry representatives to try to find a path forward. Then finally, another outstanding issue at the General Assembly is the topic of a state budget. So this would bring us to a four-letter word you can actually use at the dinner table that was mentioned earlier, LGDF, which is the abbreviation for the Local Government Distributive Fund. As you may know, during his annual budget address, Governor Pritzker recommended cutting the local share of the Local Government Distributive Fund by an additional 10% when compared to last year's distribution. This is a designated local portion of the income tax revenues distributed to cities and counties on a per-capita basis. And your packet today includes our fact sheet on this critical funding source. Now, I need to note that the General Assembly still has to approve this proposal, and we are adamantly opposed to any further reductions of LGDF. And we'll continue to advocate against legislation that would enact this reduction. This is just a few of the topics that IML is actively involved in. We have many more resources on our legislative page, as I mentioned. That would be iml.org-legislative. And as a municipal official, you can sign up to receive our weekly e-newsletters, our e-newsletter, the State House Briefing, which provides timely updates about what is occurring at the Capitol. Other newsletters you can sign up for is our monthly Federal Focus and our monthly Legal Bulletin. You know, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I'd just like to note that if you have a legislative inquiry going forward, you can send that via email at imllegislation@iml.org. Thank you.
Questions on legislation? James?
Thanks. That was a great presentation. I see that I have a book here on home rule versus non-home rule, but the two items that they're talking about extending home rule-like powers to non-home rule municipalities for taxing purposes, what, you know, how much is going to be left of differentiating home rule from non-home rule if they keep extending those capabilities to the non-home rule
Is it okay if I answer this? Okay. So, just a slight correction to the question. They're not actually giving these, they're not actually giving home rule powers to non-home rule communities. We're asking them to. So they really haven't been affording that many. On the motor fuel tax, we requested non-home rule communities to have the ability to adopt a local motor fuel tax by the city council statewide. They only gave it to the municipalities in Cook County. So, you know, that's a whole 'nother issue. That's one example where they did, but we're trying to get it statewide. I guess to the question, there doesn't need to be a distinction. We would prefer that every community is home rule, because it allows the local community to make more decisions, the corporate authorities to make more decisions, have more authority. So we actually would like to see more non-home rule communities to have home rule powers. The way they can do that is statutorily to allow the, to allow non-home rule communities to do something. The big difference between home rule and non-home rule, and you've seen this in whatever was probably advertised in, for Savoy, their question recently, so I'm sure you probably heard some of that. The difference is that home rule communities can do anything that this General Assembly hasn't said they can't. And non-home rule can only do what the General Assembly has said they can. So there are some things that we think non-home rule communities should be able to do also. So to your question, if there's more that's given to non-home rule, we see that as a good thing. It doesn't take away from home rule.
All right. Thank you.
Jay?
So thank you again for another very informative presentation. I just had a question of if we, as elected officials, have a disagreement with the policies that are being put forward as priorities for IML and the legislation, you know, the lobbying that you all are doing, what does that feedback process look like to be able to say, hey, I don't agree with this direction that you all are advocating?
Just right there, you can call us, you can tell us, you can stop us, you can email, and that happens. So just yesterday, I responded to a North Shore suburban community in Cook County that asked about three bills, saying, why are you opposed to these bills? And we, I provided the explanation, which for all three of them was, it's not what you think it is. So there's more to it. It's got a nice title, but the real issue is a lot deeper. And so, we will take a position in, by our board adopted policies and principles, maybe to support or oppose something, as Mitchell went through, that is on a statewide basis. If we oppose something that the City of Urbana thinks is a great idea, you're more than welcome to support it, and that's fine, and it's okay to have the differing opinions. What we're trying to look out for is the statewide perspective. Now, sometimes, in these issues that I just answered the question about in this email I got, are things that the community said, well, we're all for this. We think this is a great idea, and in fact, we already do this. Why would you be opposed to it? We're not opposed to the idea, and we welcome and encourage you to do that if you wish to. What we're opposed to is the mandate, that you have to do it. So if Urbana wants to adopt a policy on something, great, and we are behind you 100% on that. But if the General Assembly tells you you have to, we might be opposed to that. And so, if you have a disagreement, just let us know. Ask the question. In fact, we have an issue that's out there, and I'll touch on it. It's a gardening bill. And, you know, who doesn't like gardening? I like tomatoes, and that's really about all I like, but there's a piece of legislation that's moving to advance gardening. How could we oppose it? Well, we are opposed to it, and we're very opposed to it. Not because of the gardening, but because it eliminates your authority in local zoning, and it eliminates your authority to regulate anything having to do with gardening. So maybe I could build a three-story greenhouse structure in my front yard, but, you know, that's probably not a good thing. So we have to look deeper into the issue, and if we've opposed it for, there's a reason. But if any community has a difference of opinion, they're welcome to have that. We ask them to tell us, so that we do know, maybe we need to change our opinion.
Any other questions?
Is it email the preferred communication on that, or you said to call?
Either's fine. I mean, we take, you know, inquiries however. You can go onto our website, and the page that Mitchell talked about, you can put the bill number in our search box in general, and it'll pull up what he showed you. You can send an email through our inquiry on our website, or through any of our individual email addresses, which are listed on our bios, or you can call. If you send us an email, we probably will be able to give you some reference points back. You know, we may be able to give you the bill page, or maybe send you some detail, but however you want to do it is fine. So I'm the closer here, but we're gonna, we're gonna touch on just wrapping up the legislative piece, and then also concluding the whole morning. Legislative issues are very important, and that's a lot of what we do that is forward-facing. So you'll get a lot of information from us. If you don't want our newsletter, you know, tell us you don't want it. We'll take you off the list. You have to get added on to it, so you're not going to get it automatically. So that form in your packet, if you want to get the stuff, just fill it out, and we'll send it to you. And, you know, it's very informative, but as Mitchell noted, it helps if you talk to your legislators. And even if you don't know an issue, if you're talking to a legislator, it could be like, this LGDF, I don't know where LGDF is right now, but we, we support IML's position. That helps, too. And know on that, all we're going to be doing is trying to get you more money. So that's an easy one to support our position. But please be engaged, if you can, with your local legislators. Now, to the question that was asked, you might have an individual position that's different from your city council's position on something, too. So make sure that if you are speaking about something for or against it, you're indicating if it's for or against because of the city, or because of yourself, just so you don't get caught on something. And the mayor is usually the spokesperson on those types of issues, so you can talk with her. So to wrap up this morning, you know, this is an exciting moment for you, because you're newly-elected officials or re-elected officials. Some of the topics we talked about are not really exciting, but they are the law, and they're very important. The materials we provided to you are significant. You don't have to go through them all tonight, but if you happen to, and in the middle of the night, you've got a question, just give me a call. I'm probably sitting at my desk. So if you have questions about any of these things we've talked about, you can send us an email or call us, and we'll be glad to walk through them with you. This is a real pleasure for us to be able to present to you, specific to the City of Urbana, because we usually present these in general, and so we were able to tailor this a little bit more to Urbana. But the issues are going to be faced by municipal officials everywhere across the state. The role of the council as a legislative body is important to keep in mind. So you are policy setters at the top level. You are here to consider issues, to adopt budgets, expend funds, approve and reject policies, and then let the administration carry them out. And the administration, in most cases, is the mayor and the administrator, who has the authority over the rest of the government. So this table is your workplace. Use it effectively. If you have issues, bring them up, talk about them, debate them, adopt or reject them, and then allow the staff and the administration to go carry them out. That's your role as the legislative body. And if you provide for that, then I think you will have a better relationship with the staff, the staff will have a better relationship with you, and you'll have a better relationship with the community, because everybody will understand everybody's role. And you'll, each, each of those individuals and groups involved will be able to effectively do their jobs. Each community is different, so there are local nuances to everything. So look up, you know, if you have a question like, well, he said this, okay, but it may be a little different here in your local ordinances, so make sure you ask a question if it, if it could have some local impact. Public meetings are for the public. It's important to remember that. Sometimes you'll get people that want to give their full four minutes of public comment, and that's okay. You're here to represent them. You are their representative, and this is their meeting, actually. This is the public's meeting. You're just empowered to do their business there. And so, sometimes it's easy. I was in elected office locally for nearly 20 years. It's easy to really not appreciate people who come and talk, and go on and on, and say the same things over again, and maybe say things that aren't factually correct, or make accusations. Just take it in as a part of the process, and use it to be able to help them maybe later, you know, know what their concerns are, and serve them to the best of your ability. We have a survey. It's that green sheet I mentioned at the beginning of the program today. I would love for you to fill that out. I'll take it. Our staff is going to collect the materials that they brought, and they're going to take off. I'm going to join you for lunch and stay, and be glad to answer any additional questions you have as a part of that. And just in closing, I want to thank you again for the opportunity, and I want to congratulate each of you for the role that you will soon be undertaking, and look forward to working with you. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Brad. I just want to thank once again Brad, Cassie, Patrick, Ally, and Mitchell for being here on a Saturday morning. We really appreciate it. It's the first time I've experienced training like this, and I, I think it's been, and I've learned a lot this morning. So thank you for the resources. One thing I didn't highlight was the IML's role in providing information over the past year related to the pandemic. We were deluged with information on a daily basis, all day long, as I'm sure some of you were in your jobs, and IML provided very good summaries, updates, and really helped hone in on some of the most important pieces of information that we needed to know, particularly keeping up with the governor's emergency orders, which came fast and furious the first few months. So, so we were always a half step behind, but that's where we had to be, so it was extremely helpful, and I appreciate that as, as much. And, and I'll, I'll, I'll reiterate, they are open to your calls, your questions, and are very, very responsive, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
So we have, please fill out your surveys. We have your boxed lunches in the back of the room, and we will reconvene promptly at 1:00, so we can stay on schedule. All right, we're going to resume our training, and we'll have a couple of minutes from Sanford Hess. Our IT manager will, he'll just fill you in on what to expect with your city email and other IT-related issues.
Well, welcome, everyone. So I just asked for a few minutes here to give you a piece, a few pieces of information, and I have a piece of paper that'll be passed out in a second, but we're not passing out the paper first, because then everybody will be reading the paper. So briefly about your email accounts. We are going to set up a city email account for each of you. I believe those will be set up at the beginning of the week. We'll be notifying you
We'll be notifying you, well, obviously, we'll have to notify you from your other email account to give you what your city email account is. Usually, it's first initial, second, middle initial, last name. The basics of email are such that we host it all here at the city. You can access your email through a web address, which is going to be on the piece of paper. And you can also set up access from your phone or other device, if you so wish. Those steps are a few additional steps, and we'll talk you through them when it's time. And sometimes we just have people come into the building. We get you set up on your phone or other device. Couple of basics about city email to understand. Number one, your city email is subject to Freedom of Information Act requests. So all inbound and outbound email is stored for searching. Second is, we strongly recommend that you do not use personal accounts for any city business. So you should transact all communication through your city accounts. However, campaigning should not be done with your city account. So I strongly recommend that if you don't have one already, you should set up a separate email account for campaigning purposes. Use that specifically for campaigning. Use your city account specifically for city business. And as much as possible, keep them separated as well from your personal accounts. One of the obvious challenges is that people will reach out to you using any of the above. So if someone, say, emails you with your personal account, you should forward it to your city account, and then respond from your city account. So that's going to happen, and to the greatest extent possible, it's really just going to be on you to manage that. Because you're part of the city's IT system, you're going to be asked to take the same IT security training as all of our employees. So there'll be two rounds of that. The first round is some basic security training. The second one is specifically targeting phishing, which is when people send you emails that have attachments or links that they want you to click on, which can then corrupt your machine, or worse, corrupt the city's network. So once you take that training, you're then going to be part of our ongoing phishing campaign. You will get phishing emails sent from our training partner. Those phishing emails are based on real phishing emails that are floating around whenever what's going on. If you click on those links, you will be reinforced about the things to watch out for. And so the entire purpose of why we're doing that is to get people used to monitoring and deleting phishing emails. We also periodically have problems with the mayor asking for gift cards. When those are sent, they are not sent from her city email account. There's some random Gmail account, but it does happen. And when it does happen, it's just something to watch out for. Definitely, the mayor would never ask any of you to buy her gift cards. So if you receive those kind of emails, you can just delete them and move on. One last thing about email is we have a spam filter that we use. The spam filter is configurable, but in general, if it thinks something, it looks spammy. It'll prefix the message with spam and asterisks, and sort of warn you that. The other thing that will happen is if it looks really suspicious, it'll quarantine it, and you'll get notifications periodically of your quarantine. Many emails are simply blocked, and those are based on a scoring, based on historical, historical information. If there is a situation where someone says, hey, I keep emailing you, why aren't you getting it? Then contact us, and we can look into the spam filter settings. You have the ability to put somebody on our allowed list. So even though they seem very suspicious, if that person, that's really how they communicate, you can allow their email to come through beyond the filtering. So those are just some basics of how your emails will be handled. One last note, I put a couple of things on here. One last note is about passwords. Your password will expire every 90 days, so you'll have to change that. You can change it through the same website you check email on. Lastly, we will also sign you up for something called I Am Responding. I Am Responding is a notification tool that we use to communicate quickly with everybody. So for example, you know, if there's a weather event, or for some other reasons, you know, the city building needs to be closed in a hurry, we would use I Am Responding to notify everybody. You can sign up for text messages in addition to the email. So you're receiving them, so you receive the same notifications as everybody else. It is up to you if you want to receive the texts as well. I would say we send no more than five or 10 a year. So it's really not a very common tool. We're not going to spam your texts. But it's up to you about how you want to receive those notifications. Okay, James, you can pass out the paper now. Yeah. So anyway, a lot of what I just said is on this piece of paper. If you have any questions or anything else, there's an email near the top. The IT Help Desk is your one-stop shop for all questions, and we'll get back to you. The IT Group staffs, 8 to 5, Monday to Friday. Outside of that, if there are issues, I can be contacted. I'm the 24/7 point of support. But in general, just be aware that more than one person is here during the week, and we will deal with the issues as they come in. Any questions about, yes?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. So just to understand this, if, you know, as we look at our email accounts and we start deleting them, because just to, you know, organize and manage, whatever, we don't have to worry about that being deleted. I mean, it can be foiled by you guys, right? You have it. Is that what?
Yes, that's a good question. It's actually a relatively recent thing that we've done, but we have now an email archive that allows us to get at that information quickly in a searchable way. So even if you delete an email, it'll still in the archive for as long as the retention rules dictate. So those will be deleted. The minimum amount of time is one year. But on a rolling basis, we'll figure out some kind of a purge of the archive. So yes. Nope. Okay, great. Thank you all. Good luck with the training.
Okay, we'll move on to Phyllis Clark, Urbana City Clerk, and she'll be discussing parliamentary procedure.
Well, welcome, everybody. This is going to be a brand-new council, and it's going to be very, very different than what I've seen in the past.
Could you speak a little closer to the mic?
Right here?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. This council is very different than those that I have worked with before, but I'm looking forward to it. I actually have a PowerPoint that I was going to show you guys, but the IML just blew my thunder. They talked about parliamentary procedure, and it's this very same, very same, almost word for word, as to what I had on my PowerPoint. So I'm going to bypass that. I will not be redundant. I'm going to move forward with some things that I think that you all might be able to use. I'm going to give you a little bit about the clerk's office, what it is that we do. It's just a very short something, but it's something that I think you guys might be able to feel the need to do, and we're there for you. The first thing that I have down here is that we preserve and maintain the official permanent records of the city and documents that they have. We develop and implement record retention schedules as per the Illinois Local Records Commission. We are the keeper of the city seal, and I certify and attest official signatures on municipal documents. If my signature and my seal is not on it, it's not something that's going to be considered a legal thing if it has to go to court for anything. We meet all the requirements and legal notices of publication requirements that include legal advertisements, ordinances, and other documents, as well as legal notifications and official filings and recordings of municipal documents with the county and other governmental entities. We act as the clerk for the city council. That includes preparation and distribution of meeting agendas and meeting materials, recording minutes, transcribing minutes, preparing calendars, and making travel arrangements for you all if you wanted to go to any of the conferences that might be available to you later. We distribute incoming mail. We post outgoing mail. We issue raffle license. We register domestic partnerships. We receive claims filed against the city. We coordinate and retain subdivision construction bonds. We verify updates of the city code and zoning regulations. We provide services for the public and news media, which includes maintaining copies of documents for public inspection, coordinating and uploading materials to the city's webpage, receiving all FOIA requests, maintaining FOIA log, and assisting the Freedom of Information Officer as is needed. The clerk is the local election authority for the municipality. I distribute and process candidates' nomination papers. And by the nature of my position, I am a deputy registrar. That's a little bit about what we do in the clerk's office. And when I say little, I mean a very little. We do so much more. I did notice that when the guys was talking to you from IMRF, they didn't say a whole lot about the different kinds of motions that's out there for you. There are 13 motions that you can use in order to get the business done that you need to do. And it always start with the main motion on the floor. So you got to have that one first before you can go to any other ones. And I'll give you guys a copy of this that shows you the 13 motions that you're going to need. I'll make a copy of that. I didn't have it for the stuff that I have right now. There's privileged motions. I often wondered what did they mean when they said privileged motions when I first got started. That is a motion which does not relate to the pending question, but have to do with matters of urgency and importance. You can do this without debate. They allow the, they allow to, you to interrupt anything that's going on at the moment. And the kinds of things that are privileged motions is motions to adjourn, motions for recess, motions to raise a question of privilege, and motions to call for the orders of the day. The orders of the day, in some cases before, people thought that that meant, if I call for the orders, that's going to stop any discussion and anything like that. We're through, and now we're just going to take it and go ahead on and make our vote and end this. It's not that way. You have to have 2/3 of a vote from the people that's on the assembly to allow you to call for the orders of the day. There's subsidiary motions, and they are motions that assist the assembly in treating or disposing of a main motion, such as laying it on the table, calling for the previous question, to limit or extend debate, to postpone to a certain time, to refer to a committee. To refer to a committee. Now, if you lay, if you lay something on the table during the process of discussing, you do know that laying it on the table is the temporary thing. And generally, by the end of your meeting, you have to call it back off the table. If you don't want to take it any further, then it's when you have to send it to another place or, you know, do it to a time certain. You can refer, you can refer a motion to a committee or to another meeting, if that's what you want to do. And that's also part of the subsidiary motion. Okay, parliamentary motions is needed, and it's needed for specific reasons. Okay, you always start with your main motion. Any motion to amend or to do, have they have any questions or want to discuss anything other than that, you always start with the last motion that you made to do your voting. And you go all the way down, and the main motion is the last one that you vote on. That's if the motions that you are making, or the amendments that you are making, does not change the main motion completely, then you do have to go back and make that main motion final. You can postpone a motion indefinitely, and when you do something like that, that means that the motion is gone for a long time, possibly dead. Okay? And you won't have to bring it back anymore. The main, the main motion brings a question again before the assembly. You can do that by a reconsideration. That means that if you have an item that you're dealing with, and you make a motion on that, people vote, it either passes or it fails. And after you have thought about it for a minute, and you decide that you think you'd like to get some more information, or that you would like to change your vote, the person on the winning side would have to be the one to call that motion back for reconsideration. And it has to have a 2/3 vote to do that as well. That means that you can discuss it again. You can change your vote at that time, if that's what you wish, or if it failed, or if it passed, and it still does it the same time, you know, if it does it a second time, then it stands as it was before. We had a, an incident that was very similar to that. I think that it was not done within the same week that the motion failed. And so we considered that to be one, that it wasn't going to come back again. However, it could have. It could have. Because what it states is, is that it can come back within a specific time. If you're going to do two weeks or one week further, then you'd have to redo the entire thing all over again. But it could have come back and could have been voted on within a timely manner. But that's done now, and it's over with, and the next time, we will know better. There's incidental motions, and the incidental motion is point of information, parliamentary inquiry, division of the assembly, or division of a question that might be pending for you, withdraw a motion, object to consideration of a special motion, motion to suspend the rules, and a motion to appeal from the ruling of the chair. If the chair rules one way and the assembly wants to rule another way, then they can appeal that motion, but the, the chair of the meeting would have to state why they made that motion the way that they did, and why they wanted to do it that way. There's a point of order. That's one that will stop everything and have the question that someone might say, I have a point of order. Then the chair or whomever is going to have to explain what's going on when the person say, I have a point of order for whatever item it is that they're talking about, or motion that they're talking about. If the chair made it, then the chair has to explain why they made the motion the way that they did. That's just a couple of little things. Everything else that you all need from us in the clerk's office is in the little packet that I have laid on there for you. Our phone numbers in the clerk's office is on the very last page of one of those things. And please feel free to call us. We're there for you. There's always someone in the clerk's office. We very seldom work from home. So if you have anything that you need to have done here, just call us, and we are here for you. Is there any questions? Yes.
Thank you for the presentation. And along the way, do people typically kind of support each other if there's a question about procedures? Or it seems like in the past, people have kind of come to you to chime in and walk through what needs to be done? Is that kind of the appropriate thing to do if we're not sure in the moment procedurally?
Yes, you can still do that. Yeah, I'm there for you.
Thank you. Yeah, it was helpful, like this little guardian angel chiming in of like, we need to make a motion. Thank you.
James?
All right.
Thank you for, for the presentation. So that means you are our parliamentarian of the board?
Sorta.
Okay.
Okay.
An unofficial parliamentarian?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next on the agenda is a presentation from our legal department. So we have our city attorney, Dave Wesner, and I don't know, is Ross going to be speaking or you're just?
Yeah, I, I think he's here for moral support.
Moral support, okay.
No, but again, because he's instrumental in FOIA things, I think if there's a particular question, he may be best served to answer. Obviously, easier to be able to do that, but I'll kind of talk in general terms about some things, and then we'll open up for questions. And again, obviously, easier too if there's something that we think he may need to answer, so. All right, so again, I'll introduce myself. I'm Dave Wesner, the city attorney for Urbana. Appreciate all of you being here. I think it's important that I've, I've been with some municipalities before where they try and structure these kinds of trainings, and it's a very hit or miss on whether council members actually show up. It's hugely beneficial. Very glad to have seen that the folks from IML were here to kind of present their material to you, to you. They're a tremendous resource, and I'm sure you've all picked up on that from today, that they're certainly there for all of you to be able to add certain questions or provide material, I think, to that may help you in the things that have to go on for city business. Couple of things that I, I think I'm going to touch on are the idea of closed sessions, some legal matters with the idea of confidentiality when it comes to the idea of closed session. And I'll touch on FOIA. And I know, I think the folks from IML touched on some of the stuff, so I'm going to try not, hopefully not to repeat what they did, although I was not here for those particular presentations, but you certainly feel free to stop me and say, "Hey, we got that, IML shared that with us," so that I'm not just, you know, born into tears on some things for this. The, the couple of things I did want to mention because of a couple of things that I caught actually while I was here, just because I feel compelled to touch on them a little bit, is, and oh, there's a question from Councilmember Cole Sitty about the ideas, "Well, what happens if this council is kind of taking a different opinion than IML does in terms of legislation?" And that, and Executive Director Cole suggested that's certainly possible. And I don't know if they touched on it in their presentations or not. One of the things that you want to be cognizant of, and the mayor may have elaborated on this too, is unfunded mandates. That's where you come through where Executive Director Cole suggested that they may take a position opposing something because of the statewide potential impact it has, even if the city itself thinks, "Well, I think that's a great idea." The preference is let the local government decide, are they financially able to actually go ahead and do that? And then that's where that kind of, he suggested, "Hey, if you guys want to go ahead and do that, that's fine." But overall, IML is, is very aware of and tries to stay on top of those unfunded mandates, and you will see they generally oppose those because of the financial impact they have. Sometimes I think it's helpful to kind of present some, some war stories a little bit. I know Executive Director Cole suggested the, the role that you play with regard to the operation of the city and its legislative in nature, not so much operational in terms of departments. To give you an idea of that, I represented a municipality quite some time ago where one of the council members was very interested in public works. It was just his department that he loved. But what he would do is, he would actually go out to public works construction sites and tell the contractor how he was supposed to do the work. It's kind of not exactly the position you want to find yourself in, you know, in terms of inserting yourself into the idea that operation. Certainly, if there's issues, obviously, those can be raised, but, you know, to be out on a site and, you know, trying to impact that, I think, is a little bit beyond the scope of, of what your role is. Last thing I want to touch on is Mr. Hess touched on at the very end of his comments to Councilmember Evans' question about emails and the concept of deleting them. Again, I'll, I'll reiterate just as, as a clarification to you, don't just automatically delete those. They are public records, there is a Public Retention Act, and there's a destruction process that I'm assuming the city clerk's office probably assists in, in doing that. They have to control that, because you have to actually get state authorization to destroy public records, and there's a process and there's timings associated with certain types of records that you can't just go in and say, "Hey, that email was six months ago, I don't need that anymore, and just go ahead and delete that." That they'll take care of. I think Mr. Hess suggested that that's how that would work on his end, is they'd monitor the idea of, you know, the, the retention of those, and after a certain amount of time, they'll seek to kind of purge those, because I think as Councilmember Rule was suggesting on the idea of the number of emails that may be out there, you know, in terms of not taking up all that space on a server or something like that, it does create some issues. And so I just wanted to make sure you were clear on that is, don't just go in and automatically delete emails that you get relative to city business. Okay? Okay, I'll kind of just jump into kind of a couple of thoughts about my topics for today, and I'll start with the idea of closed sessions. I think IML handed out a very good material piece on the Open Meetings Act, and again, that's where you'll find the idea of the possibility that the council can go into closed session for certain things. I think they highlighted a couple of things in theirs. I probably highlighted a couple of different ones, and part of that is driven by the next piece of that, which is when you go into closed sessions, it's very important that outside of closed session, you don't start talking about things that occurred in there because of the ramifications that it has. One of the items you can go into closed session for is collective negotiating matters, just obviously when you're bargaining with unions, and your negotiation team may come back in a closed session and kind of give you updates on where things stand during those. That's one item you can do closed sessions for. But again, if for some reason you end up outside of that, now going, talking to individuals who may be associated with that union, and you start saying what was discussed in there, and you're actually providing what the city's positions are on things, or what they're maybe willing to do or not do in terms of, "Oh yeah, we'll settle on that issue, and then we're going to take a step over here." And this is, the union now is, if they're going to know that, it's going to impact you later to actually get to a contract that you're more comfortable with, that's beneficial to the city, not so much where it's going to end up you on the union's side of things. And so again, just going to encourage you to think about these things in terms of the, the negative impact they can have on, on the result if you end up speaking about items that occur in closed session. Purchase or lease real estate or selling real estate that the city owns. Again, what I will share with you, my experience is that when you have economic development, then part of that piece is going to be the purchase of property, and maybe the city wants to engage in participation and try and facilitate that economic development. You may find, okay, our inn is going to be trying to purchase this property, and then we'll use that as our kind of facilitating the, the development. When individuals, property owners know that, automatically, they're going to say the property's three times the value, you know, that it really is worth. What you'll have in the closed session is discussion about what is the tolerance level for the city in terms of purchasing that. If you talk about the appraised value and then you say, "Well, you know, we really want to do that, we really want to facilitate this, so we may pay X number of dollars to purchase that." If that gets out, what do you think the property owner's going to do? He's going to hit that number, or even higher than that, knowing that you're willing to get to that point, and he may try and get you even a little bit higher on where that is, and all of a sudden, you've spent a lot more money than you needed to, to try and purchase that piece of property. So again, another example. And the, the next one I'll touch on is probably the most, most significant example of this and, and results in the idea of the caution on this, and that is pending or anticipated litigation, especially as it pertains to pending litigation. If there's a closed session to discuss where things stand, and you're going to discuss the idea of the city's strategy in addressing the lawsuit against them, if that gets out, again, you can understand what's going to happen, as the opposing side now is going to understand, "All right, you know, the city's willing to settle for this, you know, they're, they're going to take that and run with it on that." Or however the city's going to approach that litigation regardless, gets out, it, it gives the opposing side a lot of leverage in the idea of the result of that litigation. And so again, you know, my, my cautionary note is, please do not do that. I'll give you an example again, I think, do think war stories are helpful. A municipality I represented, one of the council members was the mother of a firefighter. So again, council oversees the negotiations with the fire department, and what would happen is, when we would go in and update the council on the idea of where negotiations stood, I will almost without a doubt know and understood that within five minutes of leaving that council meeting, the fire union knew exactly what was talked about inside that closed session. And, and that really hamstrung the city's ability to kind of move forward in those negotiations to reach what they felt was a beneficial contract, at least in the city's eyes, and not a hugely negative one, driven by the union. And so, again, a very, very cautionary note on that. One of the things about closed sessions, the, the thought is, well, because I've been asked this, when that happens, can't we just kick that council member off the council for, for going out and speaking out of turn outside of a closed session? There's very, very limited circumstances where you could actually pursue that kind of concept. The only one I ever knew about and was somewhat involved in was when a council member moved out of their ward. You know, that's clearly something, they're no longer eligible to sit in that particular seat because they're not living in the ward. But for these kinds of issues, you know, they're a little bit different. Certainly, what can happen is the remaining council can seek to sanction the member who spoke out about closed session items, and, and, you know, it's kind of like a public reprimand, so to speak, on the idea of that. And, and that's good, because I think you need to address that if you can. You know, I'll share, we as humans, you know, you never know whether it's truly going to impact someone for them to understand they shouldn't have done that and don't do it again in the future. But my, my main point is, that can happen. My main point is, I, I want council members to think about the truly negative impact that could be had if you start talking about closed session items outside of closed session to anybody. Could be a friend. You know, obviously, my example was the firefighter's mother would go talk to her firefighter's son, who was on the negotiating committee for them. And that creates huge problems, and so, you know, please understand that there are ramifications for doing that in a lot of different ways. The worst of which is you put the city in an extremely negative position with regard to whatever the item is. I mean, you may think, "Well, this is not that big of a deal," but it can be, because it just translates into problems outside of that. I think those were kind of the main points as far as like closed session items that you can go into closed session for, and kind of the idea of, you know, confidentiality. Confidentiality is kind of a big piece in other areas as well when it comes to economic development. You know, a lot of times, if you have a developer want to come in and, and start talking to staff, mayor, about what their plan is or what their thought is for economic development, what they want to tell you is, is, "We're doing this in confidence," because they face the same thing as I mentioned earlier. If the city's involved in buying a piece of property to facilitate economic development, you know, people know, "Hey, the city, it's the city, so they've got the money, they're going to pay whatever, what can figure out they're going to pay." The same thing will happen to the developers. If, if they're, if they're going to be the ones trying to acquire that parcel or anything, and, and so people start understanding what's happening is, it, it's negatively impacting the possibility of having that development actually occur. And so you just, I, I again encourage you, and I think the mayor and probably Minister Mitten would share with you, when those things come up and the need for confidentiality, so you're aware, you're not left guessing on the idea as well, should I keep this in confidence or not, you know, hopefully provide some direction to make sure that you have an idea of, you know, which items, you know, you have to be cognizant of. With that, then I think I'll probably touch on FOIA. You know, it's one of those things, it's, it's kind of a hot topic in certain areas and can again, kind of be problematic in the sense of dealing with it really relative to exemptions. And if, again, I repeat what the folks from IML said, I apologize, but, you know, so public records are just that. I mean, there's a presumption that they're actually open to the public and should be released. And so there are exemptions that are listed in the statute, and those exemptions are there for a reason. The legislature obviously felt compelled that there are certain things that are, should be exempt and, and not subject to being released. That's why they're in there. And so, you know, those are held to a strict standard though, where you can't just give them lip service. You have to actually have some level of argument to say that these records fit into that exemption, and that's why we're not going to release them. But again, it's, it's a cautionary note, at least on staff's part of side of things, as well as myself, on the idea of making sure that we do believe we have a legitimate reason and basis to that the exemption applies. We, you know, put that forward and then kind of see what comes out of it. Certainly, people can have different opinions about the idea of exemptions as it pertains to particular records, and that's just par for the course. And so those can, uh, wind their way through a couple of different processes if that happens, one of which is you can submit to the Attorney General's Public Access Counselor for review of what the city put out, whether it was a complete rejection or just some redactions that the individual felt that those redactions were not warranted either. And their function, the Attorney General's function is to provide opinions relative to the idea of reviewing whether or not what the city did was actually appropriate under that particular exemption. The other option is that individuals can go to court and have a judge weigh in on the idea of it. And so, you know, opposite opinions can happen, and there are paths to try and reach a resolution to those, you know, to, to get a formal answer on that. And again, whatever that answer is, is what it is. You know, if we're taking a position that ends up being approved by the Attorney General of Court, great, we know we were right. If for some reason it turns out the other way, certainly, we take that tart, understand going forward that, okay, this is the way we see that, this is the way it was positioned by the Court or the Attorney General's Office, helps us going forward if we get a similar request again, understanding the position that the Attorney General of Court has taken on that. Uh, just to give you a couple of examples in terms of what a lot of times I think are the main points that come up when you're talking about providing redactions in records. The main one is private or personal information of individuals. The, the one I say about this is just the clearest example, which is social security numbers. Long ago and far away, I don't think too many people thought about the idea of just putting a record out there that may have contained that, but in today's identity theft world, certainly, it's important. And so what became was the legislature recognized that it's not just that, there's a lot of other pieces to personal information that can be redacted out of that. Again, to prevent, you know, things from happening to an individual that may be noted in a particular record, to prevent the worst thing happening to them, I guess, and, and, you know, or invasion of their personal privacy in a sense of, you know, there's certain information that should not be made public about a particular individual. And some of that stuff is defined by statute, and so again, they're trying to make it clear on the idea of what information that is, so, you know, we're not left guessing either. We kind of have an idea of what can be redacted in that sense. The other one is, you know, law enforcement records. There's exemptions in there that are outlined in several different kind of subparagaphs on the idea of how you can either redact or not release certain information, and so I won't go into that to detail. There, I know in certain council meetings, you're, you're, we're getting updates from departments about the idea of, again, some more council education, and this may be a more formal one for that, where you get a little bit more detail on that. But again, I know that one's obviously kind of a hot topic as well, but again, there are exemptions in there, and again, you just review those, take a position on the idea of whether or not the exemption applies to what the person is asking for, and, and advance that further. Um, let's see. Another one, a couple of exemptions relate to the idea I touched on earlier, which is economic development. A lot of times when you're doing economic development, developers or companies will submit a lot of information to the city relative to what they're trying to do, and so a lot of that may be, you know, exempt from release as well, because it may be trade secrets or certain financial information that really should not be put out by that particular company or that particular entity. Because it puts them at a disadvantage, it may create some financial harm or other harm to them, and so again, that's why the legislature put that in there. The other one I'll tell you is, they added, I think, a section to this that talks about the idea of any other federal or state statute that will require records to not be released. What I'll share is that if you look at the exemption section under FOIA, the main one goes from A, I think, all the way to double E, I think, or I'm sorry, double J. So again, there's a host of them. The specific paragraph that talks about state and federal records and, and the exemptions of those, that goes from A to AAA. And so you see that there are a host of paragraphs that talk about the idea of what can be exempted and not released, or at least redacted. So they're, again, they're there for a reason, legislature put them in there, and again, that's where we focus on in terms of when we get those kind of requests on that. And so I think that's all I wanted to touch on, again, kind of open up for questions. A lot of times when I do presentations, you know, I, I, I do the boring part first in terms of trying to walk through some things, but I prefer to leave questions and answers, because I think if you come in to kind of a training session or any other kind of seminar and you have these questions in your mind, and I only do just my own bit, you may be left leaving with those questions still unanswered. So I do think it's kind of important to always try and allow for kind of a question and answer period to, to address certain things. So I think at this point, unless the mayor would like me to touch on something else before we do that, would certainly open up for questions, so.
Go ahead for questions. Questions, anybody? James?
So with regard to remote participation, does the council currently allow remote participation for closed sessions?
Um, here's what I'll tell you, is that in, in today's remote world, I think the answer is yes. And basically, what it comes down to is a structure and a logistics of the actual meeting. Some municipalities do their meetings in a way that they're trying to accommodate the closed sessions for what their purpose is as far as trying to exclude the public from them and, and only have the council members involved in the meeting. I, I couldn't tell you that there's a good way or a bad way to do that. I think what Urbana does, and the American, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what they do is they send out a link for the main meeting, okay? And if there's going to be a closed session, what they'll do is they send a separate link, right? And so to me, that's actually a good process, because what happens is now only the council members are going to get that secondary link to the closed session, which means the public won't have access to it. You're done with the- You're done with the closed session, you exit that link, you go back into the other one, which was the main meeting, and that's where the public is still there. And you, so you kind of come back into your public session at that point. There's some other municipalities that do a little bit differently and, and the, the process they, they use, I think, is just a little bit more cumbersome and, and, uh, and tough. I think this process actually is probably the best way to handle the idea of those closed sessions.
And, and so to follow up, if we were not in pandemic times, was there, was, was there historically remote participation in?
No, in, you know, in, in non-pandemic times, we, our main meeting is here. If we have a closed session, we of course take the vote in open session, then we go upstairs to the executive conference room physically up there, and that's where the closed session is held, and then we come back down here.
Okay, thank you.
So you can think of that in terms of the equivalent in remote is us going upstairs to the conference room.
Yeah, the reason why I ask is I've, I've participated in a, a group that used closed sessions and had to be, was doing it remotely. And the closure of the conversation wasn't always clear because of the remote participation, right? There could be other people in those remote rooms and, and you could not tell.
Ah, yeah.
And so that's why I ask.
Chris?
Um, I know this is complicated and you can't discuss it today, you know, in its entirety today, but could you maybe just go over a little bit about law enforcement body cams, law enforcement dash cams and law enforcement police reports as related to FOIA?
I'll, I'll, I'll touch on it again. I, I don't want to necessarily read it verbatim, but it may be helpful. I'll try and like maybe paraphrase the idea of what that is. And, and so the, the paragraph starts as records in the possession of any public body created in the course of administrative enforcement proceedings and any law enforcement or correctional agency for law enforcement purposes, but only to the extent that disclosure would. And then it lists a bunch of other kind of paragraphs. And so what you do is when you get a request for the idea of law enforcement material, I'll say it that way because again, we touch on video cams and dash cams and, and body cams, is you look at kind of where does this kind of land? Uh, and sometimes it's a timing issue, you know, if that request comes in early on, like the day after some particular incident occurs, one of the possibilities is, is the idea of interfere with pending or actually contemplated, you know, legal proceedings, you know, on that. And so, uh, you know, there's that piece of it. Um, there's another section that talks about that the possibility might exist where the person would not get a fair or impartial trial. And so, you know, for those, that's where your thought process has to come in on. And you go back and, uh, online, the, the attorney general's office has online their, uh, binding opinions. I'll call them that because there's two different versions of what they issue. Uh, but their binding opinions are on there. And then obviously you'd go look at some of the case law to see, okay, did, did this kind of request happen before? That actually a court weighed in on and what did they say relative to the idea of how this request is coming in, you know, for your banner records from the police department, so. I know that may be a very generalized version of answer to your question, but, uh, what I'll share is that's probably one of the more complicated areas. And the reason is because there's so much to it and there are so many pieces to this particular exemption on the idea of reviewing what they're asking for in relation to what the exemptions provide.
Okay. Could you maybe explain, I don't think you were the city attorney at the time, but last year, uh, the police department came in with all kinds of body cam footage, I mean, like five different officers. And there was like a two hour meeting and this was like a, a week after the incident. And they were showing body cam at a city council meeting. Is, is that allowed or is that?
It, it can be. What I'll share, and again, I, I hesitate again, it, it is what it is. Um, because I don't necessarily want to open the door to a lot of things, um, relative to commentary about the idea of these exemptions in FOIA in and of itself. Because again, as I said, you start with the idea that public records are subject to being released. And you have to actually have some true factual legal support for using these exemptions. And they're very, you have, they're very particular and specific. And if you literally don't fit that category, you're going to end up being told no. And so the, the reality is though, the fact that these exemptions exist doesn't require the city to use them. They're available for the city to say, we don't believe these should be released right now, and they use these exemptions to do that. And so you will find a lot of municipalities will end up, based on maybe a particular set of circumstances, feel that they want to come in, um, and address what happened, maybe show some of the footage to, and to try and address maybe the public's concern about what happened in a way to say, look, you know, there's a lot of talk out there right now about their, this opinion or that opinion about what happened. We're going to come in and make a presentation to you so you understand the full breadth of what happened and go ahead and make that kind of a presentation. So no, it's not wrong for them to do that. And they're not violating anything by actually coming in and making that presentation, so. And again, what would happen though is that if a request came in for that, for all of that material, that would have to be released because now you've made a presentation in a public meeting with that material. Now, if there's other pieces to that, those other pieces could come back and be reviewed under these exemptions. But once you kind of make a presentation kind of in a public meeting, you know, you're, you're subject to releasing that, so.
Jay? Just have a point of clarification related to the confidentiality, uh, piece of the Open Meetings Act when, when things are in closed session. Cause IML had specifically mentioned like, and I totally understand the reasons why you're saying, please don't talk about that stuff if it's in closed session. But I believe, if I heard them correctly, that they said there isn't like a consequence if someone then goes and talks about it. And I, I ask in part because other positions I hold when we're talking about confidentiality, there are actual statutes that require me to keep things confidential. Um, and so just clarification of like, what's interpretation and preference versus actual requirements?
Um, you know, what you'll find is that, uh, you know, in, in certain areas, there may be specific statutes, as you've identified, that actually set out that particular concept as it relates to whatever that entity is, board commissioner, whatever. Uh, with regard to municipalities, you know, and again, I could do some research, I've not necessarily found something specific yet. What I find is that a lot of times is when the council maybe adopts their rules, they will talk about the idea of the penalties for doing that. Um, and so that may run the gamut. I mean, they could say one of the sanctions is we're going to fine you for, you know, talking out of turn, uh, outside of a closed session. Or, you know, the main one I think a lot of times you'll end up finding would be just the idea of that censure, that public reprimand by the remaining members of the body saying that you should not have done that. Um, you know, the Roberts Rules of Order too, I'll say, is, uh, kind of applicable in the sense because obviously every public body uses Roberts Rules of Order for the idea of the operation of their meetings. And so when you say you're adopting those to help facilitate the meetings, that actually is a piece of Roberts Rules too, is the idea of discipline for certain things that may occur during a meeting. And that's where you'll see some of that too. But again, I, I always pick up on the idea of the public reprimand because that, I know that's a standard. Uh, you know, I, I not found one yet, I guess, where maybe a municipality says we're going to impose a fine on this. Um, you know, the, the question that get asked invariably and not often, but over the years I've had it asked a few times is, can we remove that member from the council completely? Um, you know, when I've looked at it before, you know, and the mayor and administrator can kind of chime in to you if they've done some research on this and found it different, is when I've looked at that at the times it's come up, I have not found a mechanism to allow for that because you're elected official. I mean, the reality of it is that. Um, I've seen some things where it's that the city's wanting to move away from elected to appointed. And they want to do that in midterm. And what they say is you can't do it in midterm because you as an elected official were, were elected for a particular time. And so that's time sensitive to the point where, yeah, you can make that change, but you have to do it at the end of maybe a particular term. But it's, so it's again, not removal within, you know, that elected official's term. And so, yeah, i- in a sense, you know, it's, it's tough to think about the ideas that there should be a consequence because again, you know, as I shared, my, my main focus on the concept of that is not so much punishing the council. I mean, I'm not saying that's not important because I think there should be. My main focus as the attorney representing the entity of the city of Ruban is the negative impact that that stuff has. And that's where I kind of, I focus my attention on that. Cause I think that's where you want to digest that and kind of take that in a little bit versus, well, you know, uh, maybe I'll get, you know, publicly reprimanded, that's not necessarily a big deal to me. And so you, you're not thinking about the idea as well, if I just go ahead and talk about this thing, oh, well, you know, and so.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's a, it's an important point of clarification. I don't know if there was going to be an elaboration on that answer in terms of expectations for, for city council. And like I said, I completely understand the, the expectations and reasons behind that, that confidentiality. Um, like I said, there, there are positions I've had where it's a misdemeanor if I break confidentiality. So I think having that clarification of what is and isn't allowed. And if we have any policies about, um, expectations of whether it would be a reprimand, whether there is any kind of fine, I think that's important for council to know.
Yeah. At this point, it's, it's always been an unwritten, understood policy. I'd have to go back and actually look to see if we have something in our, um, council rules. I don't recall anything offhand, but it's critically important that we respect the confidentiality of the session. Cause we don't, we don't go into closed session unless there's a very good reason to do so.
Sure, thanks. I apologize. And I know, um, council member who has, has kind of a question, but I know administrator Mitten had, had commented to me that I may touch on this because that, that may be something in your mind too, I guess, is, uh, when do you get represented by the attorney for the city if something particular happens where you end up being named yourself? Uh, and so what I'll share with you is that, and again, the, the American can, uh, step into and kind of comment from her perspective about this is, if, if the city gets sued over something and they want to name all of the council members individually as well within that, uh, but whatever happened was within the role and function that you have for the city, then certainly you're entitled to being represented. If what you do is go outside of what your role and function is, um, I'm having a, having a brain meltdown on the idea of the terminology they use for that. Sometimes that happens, but, uh, there's a term that they use that when you're acting outside the scope of what your role and function is, then you may be out there by yourself and have to have your own council to do that. Because what happens is that in, in terms of co-representation, I'll say it that way. If you've got multiple defendants, they're all kind of in the same mode, meaning let's say it's all the council members, right? And what you recognize about the incident is that one was outside the scope and role. What wound up happening is, is that they point the fingers at each other. That council member may say, point the finger at the city and say, well, it's all your responsibility and you have to represent me because I'm a council member. The council is going to say, you were at fault because you were outside the role and scope of your function. And so because you now have diametrically opposed positions relative to what happened, the same person cannot represent both people. And that's where you find is that the result of that is that individual council member will have to have their own attorney to do that. I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt or stop, uh, council Maru from asking a question, so.
No, I guess my question was in terms of releasing personally identifying information. Um, you had mentioned social security numbers. Is there a, a type of personal information that is released? So for example, the name of a person, the email address of a person, the address, what kind of personal stuff do we release?
It's honestly, I think, very limited. You know, the name of the person may end up being released because again, it, it's depending on how the request comes in to you. Because if they ask for a specific name, the, the question's going to end up being is, is that if you end up sending information out that everything's redacted, including the person's name, the requester is not going to know that the record they're getting is actually pertaining to their request because they can't associate the request for a particular name for the record they're getting that doesn't show anybody's name whatsoever. What you'll find though is that a lot and probably the vast majority of other information would actually be redacted. Social security numbers, it's their home address, their home phone number, their home email address. If it's a work phone number or work email address, that's different because again, it's not personal to them. It's more of a business related thing. And so, you know, that may be subject to being released. It's all, it's the, the concept of the idea of the person themselves, um, and whether or not releasing that would subject them to some kind of barrage at their personal home or through their personal phone or email kind of system, so.
And is there any kind of language that, um, has been approved that we can put on our, on our email that just says this is subject to FOIA? So that other people, I, I've talked to the mayor about this. I'd like to add it to his signature line if possible.
Well, I, I wanted to do that last time and I was advised by the former city attorney not to do that. But I think it's a good idea because you see it on most other people's emails. So I think we should go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I, I was going to suggest that. In my point, just sitting here in front of you today, is I don't necessarily think that's a wrong thing. And the reason is, is that when you recognize that the use of your city email address is subject to FOIA, it is. And if you just state that on there, that this is subject to be in FOIA because it's your city email address, that's not an incorrect statement to put on there, so.
So we'll need a statement like that.
Okay. Yeah, we'll put that together, so.
Go ahead, Grace.
Um, I was wondering what, uh, papers you have in front of you and if we have those or access to those?
Well, I was going to say, I, it's one of those things, timing wise, is things I, I sometimes will do PowerPoint presentations. They're all put together, kind of a handout that I, that I distribute to you. And I apologize, didn't get a chance to do that. What I will share with you that I have are actually a, a couple of things that, um, you can get in a different way, but certainly if you want to do them. What I have actually is just literally a printout pages of the exemption portion of the Open Meetings Act. They just a printout literally of the statute area that talks about the exemptions of FOIA. The other thing I've got, and I know the mayor kind of alluded to this, that she would actually check for, um, council member Colossus's question about, uh, you know, the, the penalties for, you know, talking outside of a, a, a closed session in the, the council kind of, uh, you know, rules and, and stuff. There actually is a material, it's like 93 pages, I think I found, but these pages are actually out of that. So I don't know if, if the mayor, administrator Mitten attributed those to you too, but it's actually a good material piece, um, that was prepared by, I think, a previous city clerk relative to that. And there's a lot of pages to it. This one was just the pages that had the title of office of the city attorney to describe a little bit about that. Um, and some other pages that are actually in that that talk about meetings and things like that. Um, so a lot of what's been discussed today, um, but I, you know, again, I don't know if the mayor or will kind of, you know, put that out there to everybody, but that's just, that's what I have. So it's nothing that I created myself. It's actually, I, I just pieced it from either statutes or that, um, handout from the city.
We can, we can scan and share or link to whatever you have there, so.
Okay.
Hello? I'd like to ask a question.
Hello, Sharice.
Um, uh, regarding the closed session, um, penalties, so to speak, is it, um, against any particular statute for if, if one is found to be disclosing, um, a confidential information via, you know, that was talked about in closed session? Can that person just be excluded from closed sessions?
Yeah, I can answer that. Um, you know, it, it's one of those things where it would be best if the council rules that are adopted by the council actually talk about that. Um, because without it, I think you're going to end up in an argument over whether they can or can't be excluded. Cause I think realistically, I think the answer would end up being no. But here's the other aspect of the idea of that. And again, I, I hesitate to touch on this because I don't want to make it seem like this is what's going to happen because it's not beneficial, which would be is that the idea of closed session is for open and frank discussion about the items. If even the council members end up now knowing that one member is outside talking about all that stuff, the council members themselves are not going to do much discussion in closed session about it. And so you, you lose the concept of open, full, frank discussion of the items. But then also then is if staff is providing some material to that too, and all that material ends up being outside, you know, the, the closed session, um, is the, the mayor and administrator and the department is going to have to think through as well. When we know that one council member is going to be out there talking about this or releasing this, we're going to have to think about what we give them, uh, realistically. So it's not that you can necessarily exclude them unless you set it up that way. Um, but there's another consequence to that, which is no discussion and no material. And, you know, that's tough because you need to have those discussions about whatever that's going to be. Whether it's, uh, purchase of property or facilitate economic development. If it's, uh, you know, union negotiating about the idea of establishing the city's positions for things. Uh, if you can't discuss that, it's kind of tough. You're, you're leaving, and not that they, you know, would not understand how to approach things, but you're going to leave the mayor and the administrator and the department that is left with, you know, kind of their own direction in a sense on how to approach things because they can't get the direction from the council because you can't have the open and frank discussion for worry that someone's going to go outside the meeting and talk about it.
Thank you.
Is that answer your question, Sharice? I keep looking up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I think it did, pretty much.
I, I get your question, uh, council member, and, and appreciate the thought behind it. Cause again, it's one of those things where sure, I, that makes some sense. You know, that person's going to talk out of turn, well, stop letting them in. That way you don't have to worry about it. You know, but the logistics and the reality of it is, um, you know, it's tough to put that into place unless you just put it in the rules that the council adopts. Cause then it's the council adopting things that affect themselves. And so realistically, I think you'd approach it that way if that was a choice for the council to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Thanks. Um, I was also wondering about the process for how we get legal advice or look into feasibility of certain actions?
Yep, appreciate that. I thought, because I, I'm sitting back here, I'm thinking to myself of stuff I should probably touch about. And that was actually one of them, of course, I forgot to write my notes. So again, I forget about it. Uh, so I appreciate the question. My suggestion, again, the mayor and administrator can come on this. My suggestion would be is that if you feel that you need some legal advice or counsel on something, I would submit it to the mayor, the administrator first. And, and here's the reason, you know, I, I probably sound like the oddest attorney in the world who is wanting to put food on his table. And I'm telling you, don't just automatically call me so I can write it on my bill, but I don't think that's the I don't think that's the right thing to do. I think a lot of times what you'll end up finding is that the mayor or administrator Mitten can answer that question right off the bat. And so you don't necessarily need me to weigh in on that. And so, you know, there's some benefit to that. Plus, you know, again, I, I'm cognizant that, you know, it's, it's taxpayer dollars going to pay, you know, fees and costs and things like that. I'm very aware of it. I try and manage that in a way that I think is absolutely fair and reasonable. And so I don't want to automatically suggest that, yes, please, call me every day. I'm not going to do that, so.
And then I'll kind of follow up too. I was wondering if, like, is that just your role, or do you have a team, or is there ever like, if there's a second opinion people want? I mean, law seems very interpretable, so I didn't know if there's other voices in that, or if...
I, I guess what I'll suggest to that, it's not necessarily the best way to answer this question. I apologize for that. But, you know, what I'll share with you is that if for some reason I got hit in the head and was in a coma, I have a partner in my law office that would be able to help facilitate legal services to the city. But in the concept of the idea of a second opinion, you know, there's not necessarily a function for that right now, but that's going to be a decision for the mayor to make on the ideas, "Okay, well, we got this opinion from him, but we're not really sure. Maybe we need to try and find somebody else to do that." What I would encourage you to do is if that's the idea, and again, it doesn't offend me. I'm, lawyers are just like doctors, you know. You ask five lawyers, you're going to get seven different opinions. And so I would encourage you to contact IML. And whether that's through the mayor's office or some other mechanism because they have legal staff as well. And, you know, they've been around forever. As I indicated early on, they're an absolutely wonderful resource, is if you, you know, have a question mark in your mind about maybe an opinion I've prepared, I want to get maybe somebody else's take on that, I'd suggest you call, contact IML. That way, because it's, again, American Commerce, I believe it's free to the city to be able to contact them and seek their advice. So at least you're not end up, ending up with additional cost to go find a second opinion for that, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sharice, you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. And again, you know, as I, I shared, I sometimes say, "Hey, if you have any questions, let me know." But again, as to answer Councilmember Wilkins' question is, is I would encourage you to just kind of work through the mayor's office and the administrator's office on the idea of things, and they can help facilitate whether I need to kind of weigh in or not. So, but I'm available for whatever's necessary to help the city. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Well, last item on the agenda is public input. Let me check if anyone wishes to address this training session of the incoming council members, please raise your hand. Christopher Hansen, you have four minutes, please.
Hi, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hi. So my name's Christopher Hansen. It's nice to see all these new faces in the chambers, and I'm excited about the, the new council. I have found a few, few things curious in this meeting, so I just thought I'd mention them. I guess first thing that's curious is the four-minute time limit. This is a physical meeting. This is not a virtual meeting. You're all sitting there. City Code Section 2-4 should apply, which provides for five minutes. You're applying City Code Section 2-5. I think the mayor and the council didn't think of this when they created the new speaking rules, and this is just one of the many messes that the new council is going to have to clean up. I was very concerned when I heard in the presentations earlier that, you know, if, if any of the council members have any questions about things, they should always defer and go back and check with the city attorney. Well, in the past year, it has been all of the efforts by the city attorney to shield the city from liability, which has actually gotten the city into a lot of trouble. So I encourage you, of course, to, you know, check with the city attorney, but also be suitably skeptical. I, I encourage you to perform your own due diligence, and don't be afraid to do what you think is right, even if the administration is pressuring or intimidating, intimidating you to do otherwise. Because it's been demonstrated repeatedly that city legal department and the administration, you know, doesn't always do what's right, and doesn't know what's right. And frequently, that has been coming out of the city legal department. So I know Mr. Wesner is new to the city, but I'm, based on some of the things he said today, I'm already getting concerned about the direction the new city attorney might be leading us. I think I heard Mr. Wesner say that sanctions could be placed upon city council members for discussing the contents of closed sessions. I sure hope he will explain what he means by that. You can't be sanctioned for speaking about city business. You're an elected official. You have a First Amendment right to speak. I'm looking at a determination here by the Attorney General in 1991 that specifically says you cannot be sanctioned for discussing the contents of closed sessions. I urge you to look up appellate court case Swanson versus Board, Board of Police Commissioners of the Village of Lake Hills. And they came to the same conclusion in that court case. I'll just quickly read what the Attorney General said, quote, "There is no provision in the Constitution or the Open Meetings Act which expressly authorizes public bodies to sanction their members for revealing what went on during a closed meeting. And there is clearly no constitutional provision from which one may imply such powers," end quote. I heard something mentioned about excluding a city council member from a closed session. That is absolutely illegal. You cannot do that. Every one of you elected officials has a right to attend that session. So I, it concerns me that I'm even hearing these ideas. That, that whole conversation was kind of making me cringe because it was just fraught with moral hazard. And some of the FOIA stuff, I, I really urge all of you to dig into that further in your positions here. You know, talking about things like social security numbers and stuff, that's, that's never something that anyone's ever contested or cared about. When people are arguing about, you know, things being redacted, I'll, I'll mention a good one here. So last, last year, Urbana charged a lot of unlawful FOIA fees. And the Attorney General ruled on this repeatedly. They were illegal fees. So someone sent a FOIA request asking for the names of the people who paid those illegal fees, and the city wouldn't, they wouldn't provide it. They redacted it. They said it's personal information. That's, that's kind of one of the ways that the city is invoking this. And actually, they do need to provide that information. Those were, those were payments made to the city. So, and, and another example is Carol Mitten just posted the home address of a resident who had issued a complaint to the PAC. Where was the redaction of, of private information in that? So I really encourage you to, when you're looking at these things, get into the weeds, the devil's in the details, and be suitably skeptical, skeptical, and, and do what you think is right, not what, not what, you know, the city administration or the attorney is, is urging you to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Emily Close?
Yes, hello. My name is Emily Close. In my opinion, and as an observer of these meetings for the last year, I've observed that the outgoing council did not demonstrate a clear understanding of either FOIA law, or especially the Open Meetings Act, which is OMA. And this misguided understanding of OMA resulted in the city of Urbana codifying their illicit and faulty public input rules on October the 12th, 2020, and then implementing those rules to shut up the speech from citizens that they didn't wish to hear. I am hoping the new city council will stand down when it comes to restricting citizens from offering their thoughts and their opinions during pub, public input. If you do want to see as the incoming council, some of the conduct of your misguided and uninformed predecessors, I suggest that you review some of the meetings from last year where you can see exactly what was going on. Especially interesting viewing are the council members from November 9th and November 16th. And I hope that the missteps of the outgoing council have resulted in, which have resulted in ongoing litigation against the city of Urbana, which costs the money and puts the city in a bad light. This is just one of the messes that Mr. Hansen was talking about that you're going to have to clean up. And I was a little surprised to hear discussion about protecting the private information of people. You didn't protect the information of the two people who filed the Open, Open Meetings Act request for review. The resulted in you changing your own ordinance. You posted the home address and the two private email addresses of those two complainants. And I just listened to your city attorney say, "Well, you have to, you know, be careful about releasing, you know, disclosing private information because, quote, 'You want to prevent the worst thing from happening to them.'" What could you possibly be thinking, what, that you would post that information? How would you feel if your private home address or your private email address were put on your public website? I imagine you wouldn't feel very good. And you're public officials or elected officials. So do better, incoming council. You have to do better. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to address the training session? I don't see any other hands raised. With no further business before this, looking for my agenda, before this session, we will, we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much. We have Bridget here today. She's going to be, if you can stay, on the new members, she'll take your picture for use on the website and possibly a council brochure. And I should have said this before we adjourned, but I wanted to thank Kate Levy, Lori Pearson, Carol Mitten, and other city staff who worked very hard to plan for the logistics of this training. And I also want to thank all the presenters from the city staff today.